Yeah, wind it down, we go up to five.
And I keep begging him on, you know? Yeah, this week, and then he followed up today.
He's there, if you think, I mean, let's get an explanation first.
We got copies of all these lawsuits. DCCG or whoever, these lawsuits.
That's what I see.
It's trash. Lee's got it out of control. Dismissed.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, good afternoon, to the Effingham County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, March 4th, 2025. The time is now 5:03 PM. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Floyd.
Here.
Commissioner Burdette.
Here.
Chairman Braun.
Here.
Commissioner DeLoach is not present. Commissioner Helmly.
Here.
Commissioner Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Well, now I have our invocation. Madam Clerk, do you mind doing an introduction?
Yes, sir. Board members and guests and staff, tonight we have with us Pastor Lon Harden. Reverend Lon Harden is an Effingham native, born to parents Juanita and the late Deacon Louis Harden. He attended Effingham County School System, graduated in 1986. Went on to join the United States Marine Corps, where he served for eight years with honorable discharge. From the Marine Corps Reserve, he retired in May of 2019. From thirty-two years of employment with signature flight support in Savannah. He is married to Sheila Reese Harden for thirty-four years, and they have three daughters, Elondia, Janice, Jawan, and Sarah. And two grandsons, Nolan and Vincent. Reverend Harden is currently serving as pastor of the Macedonia Baptist Church of Guyton, Georgia. Celebrating this year, his eleventh year as pastor. He's first dis- was, or is, First District Moderator of the Pilgrim Association in Guyton. Former chairperson of the Effingham County MLK Observance Day Committee. Chairman of Planning and Zoning for the City of Guyton. And Guyton representative on the Effingham County Industrial Development Authority Board. He's also a member of the Effingham County Victim Witness. Board member of the Effingham County Health System Foundation. And chaplain of Widow's Sun Lodge Number Thirty-Six. He's also owner of Harlon Yard Services LLC. There are many other civic and community activities that Reverend Harden are a part of. He loves the Lord, and preaching, teaching, and singing for the Lord is a passion and a love for all. Help me welcome Pastor Lon Harden.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. Before I offer a word of prayer, we just ask that God continuously to keep each and every one of you, not only here in your civic duty for the county, but in your personal lives as well. So let's look to the Lord now in a word of prayer. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for this opportunity. We ask that you bless the county of Effingham County, the chairman and every district chairman. Oh, God, we ask that you bless every auxiliary of this county, and continuously bless each and every citizen of this county. And continuously keep us in perfect peace, whose mind is stayed on deep. And to continuously cover us from any hurt, harm, or danger. Oh, God, that good will overcome evil. And God, we ask that you be in the hearts and minds of those here tonight, that transacting business on behalf of the citizens of this county. And you'll be pleased with every decision that is made, and you'll give us all the praise, honor, and glory belongs to you. In Jesus' precious and mighty name, I do pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Harden. If you'd please stand, let's do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which there is a justice for all.
Now we'll move into agenda approval, consideration of a resolution to approve the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have received a request for postponement of Planning Board Item Number One and Two. This is an application by Forrest Floyd for variance, for a reduction in an accessory structure height located at 110 St. Matthews Road. The request is to postpone this item to March 18th. Additionally, we've received a request from Mr. Jay Moppen, which is Items Number Three and Four of the Planning Board. Jay Moppen, as agent of Oleg Mitnick, for Oleg Mitnick, is a conditional use located at 115 Parkway Drive. The applicant has requested to postpone this item, but he has not provided a date to which he would like these items postponed.
Very good. I will ask for a motion to remove Items Number Three and Four from our agenda.
So moved.
If we can incorporate the postponement of One and Two as well.
Yes, and Items One and Two to March 18th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Consideration approved in February 18th, 2025, work session and regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, the motion carries. Item Number Seven, Public Comments. Comments shall pertain to the agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, clearly state your full name and through the microphone before commencing to speak. Item Number Eight, Correspondence. The agenda packet for this meeting is posted on the county's website. Any additional documentation presented at the meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt, recording, and distribution to the board. Moving on to Item Number Nine, Presentation. Dr. Nancy Ford is here to present. Dr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members, certainly commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak before you this evening. And I know Ms. Johnson is getting that presentation together. I first want to say, you know, I appreciate this opportunity, but more importantly, I'd really appreciate the partnership that we have with our commissioners. I know our board members, we've had opportunities to meet in different settings. We've come together to make sure that we're doing the best for the citizens and the boys and girls in Effingham County. And one of the things that my board asked me to do several months ago is, you know, as we continue to grow as a county, which also makes it pretty relevant that we're going to probably grow as a school district. We wanted to really dive deep into, you know, what did the numbers really say? And what do the numbers mean? Where are the numbers at in our district? And where are we at as a school district in terms of student growth? Where and which schools are those students growing in? And then really, what are we doing to make sure that we're staying up to date on that? And so I feel very strongly about this. We had a study that was conducted with the Board of Education with a group out of Atlanta several years ago. I think it was maybe eight or nine years ago. It was a company called Educational Planning, and they came in and really just dissected our community and tried to make some forecast on what the growth looked like. I think some of you might have been on the board then, I think Ms. Helmly, you were on the school board then when that took place. But you know what was relevant then, I think is still very relevant now. I think people moved to Effingham County because of a strong school system. I think they moved Effingham County because they want to live in a safe community that has family and friendly environment-type activities for them to take part in as a family. And then I think people live here because of a growing economy. And I say a growing economy, I don't necessarily mean, you know, growing economy jobs here in Effingham County. But we are a suburb of where people live, and then they branch out to whether it's Gulf Stream or the ports out in Chatham County. I did want to provide the board, the commission, this particular study on, in regards to what the Coastal Regional Commission predicted. And then I also wanted to look at what the Governor's Office of Student Achievement actually predicted. And so maybe eight or so years ago, six or eight years ago, the Coastal Regional Commission, CRC, said that by 2030, we would be at 112,000 residents in Effingham County. I remember whenever that gentleman came in and presented this to us, I was like, man, wow, that's gonna be a lot of people in a short amount of time. And he also pulled some information from the Governor's Office of Student Achievement. But if you look at what the CRC came up with, back in 2010, there were a little over 52,000 residents in Effingham County. By 2030, prediction of 112,000, which is an approximate increase of 59,000. And then currently, we've got about an approximately 72,000. If you look at what the Governor's Office of Planning and Budget through the Office of Student Achievement, they worked together. This particular study, we thought, was maybe a little bit more in line with being a reality, although it's actually going to come in under that, I think. So back in 2010, 52,000, and then by 2030, 76,000, and we're pretty close to that. And I think that, you know, as the county continues to grow, I think we're growing at a rate of about 2,000 residents per year. And then you ask yourself, how do you know how many of those residents are going to be students? And I wish we had a magic wand that we could, you know, say, hey, which, every house that comes in, is it a 1.2? Is it a 2.1? Is it 3? And you really just, you really don't know. Because we are running into a lot of residents now, even from a school district standpoint. We're running into grandparents that don't have any kids in the community, but they're just moving here to get closer to their grandkids. And then we're running into residents that are moving from out of state. They're getting, moving from up north, they get away from the cold. We have them moving from out west, they get away from the high cost of homes. And so they're coming to Effingham County to actually retire. And so I want to talk a little bit about our enrollment trends. And if you go back, this was one of the things that I wanted to make sure that I hit home about. Because if you, if you think about it, on the, not really diving deep into the data, you would think, man, the school district's growing so fast that it just can't keep up. But if you look at the actual data, we haven't grown quite as much as we think we've had. And they're coming from everywhere. We have students that are moving in from all parts of the world. During COVID, most of the students that moved here, about 60% of them came from Chatham County or neighboring counties, Bryan, Bullock, Scriven, Jenkins County. We had several move from out of state during COVID because we were an open school district. We were not, we were not closed, we never shut down. And so if you look back at 2020, 2021, just so I can explain these numbers, I'm not going to go over each line item, but I do want to give an example. So if you look at the elementary day nine, and you're probably saying, why are you using day nine? Well, when we start school, believe it or not, we have some kids and families know that on that day ten, if they haven't attended school, then they get dropped. If we start school on a Thursday, sometimes they, they don't start. on a Thursday, sometimes they don't start till Monday. We even have some families that don't start till after Labor Day, and then they move here and they have that assumption that they don't start till after Labor Day. So we use day nine as that starting point. And then you look at the last day. So for our elementary schools back in 2020, on day nine, we were at 6,086 students. And then the last day of school, we ended that year with 6,405 elementary students. So if you scroll, if you look all the way down, you'll see during that school year, we grew 328 students. From, remember, we went out on COVID in March, and then that August was, we're still in that 2020 school year. And so day nine of that first full COVID year, we grew 328 students. And believe it or not, it was because folks, they were coming because we were open. And, you know, we put a virtual learning model out there. It looked good on paper. It sounded good, but in reality, it was not very good for the masses. It was very individual for students who had that support or who they were very self-driven. That next number you'll see is 390. So from the last day of school in the school year of 2020, 2021, to the day nine of 2122 school year, you'll see we grew 390 students. And again, we had a lot of growth going on during that time. During that school year, we grew 113 students as a district. Continuing to 2122, from the last day of school of 22 to the beginning of day nine on 2223, we grew 306 students. And then during that school year, we only grew 187 students. So you can see a slight decline over the last few years in some of our growth. From 2022 to 2023, during that year, we grew 187 students. At the end of that year, into the 2324 school year, we grew 286 students. But during the school year of 2324, we only grew 83 students as a district. And again, I could look at these numbers every single day and they change. We have students move out, we have students move in. You've got to take into account the students that graduate. We have about 850 or so that graduate, but then we'll have 1,000 move in, you know, and register, whether it's kindergarten or new students coming in that are in different grade levels. From 2324 to 2425, which is where we're at now. So this past summer, we grew 193 students. And during this school year, from day nine until about February the 15th is when I looked at those numbers to put this together, we were actually at a negative 30 students net. We were at a negative 88 students. And believe it or not, about 60 of those students were people who used an FRA, which is a family resident affidavit, where they can say, you know, I don't have a home to live in. I'm coming to live with my family. And they sign a document. And then time passes, they get comfortable, and they move back to their home in a different county. And we have full-time attendance officers that track those folks. And so 60 of those 88 were of folks that did not live in Effingham County. So we were able to deal with those and move them on. Great families, but we have a policy in Effingham County, you got to live here to go to school. So if you look at the five-year enrollment trends in elementary, and I do want to make a couple of points, you'll see that over a five-year growth, it shows Marlowe lost 108 students and South Effingham Elementary lost 145 students. I want you to keep in mind, most of that was due to redistricting. When we did a redistricting four years ago, we moved students from Marlowe and South Effingham Elementary. Some went to Sand Hill and some went to Blandford. So that's not necessarily that there was zero growth there. It was just part of that negative was we were running out of space at those two schools and we needed to make some adjustments. And we made those adjustments based on, as Commissioners and the Planning Board approved developments, we pay very close attention to that so that we can be on the forefront of it as well. So you can see over a five-year enrollment trend, we grew total, you can see on average in elementary schools, 149 students per year, a total of 746 over that five year. If you look at our middle schools, same thing. Our middle schools have continued to have some growth, and you can see that we grew 350 students over that five-year period. And I'm counting this year as well, which was about 70 per year on average. And for our high schools, we grew 515 students, about 103 per year. One thing that I want to make sure that the general public understands about our high schools, we have two base high schools. We've got Effingham County High School, we have South Effingham High School, but we have approximately 2,000 students. And in some cases, I want you to think about as 2,000 seats. And what I mean by that is we have some students that are also attending Effingham County High School and South Effingham High School for their academics, and then they're transitioning over to the Effingham College and Career Academy for some of their CTAE classes. We have some students that are in our STEM program that stay all day at the STEM Academy. We have approximately 550, 600 kids that do that. Some of them roll over to the CTAE side. Some of them go back to their base high school for seventh period to take course, take band, take weightlifting, take some additional courses that they may want to take an academic elective that's offered on one of the base schools so that they can continue to earn that for their college. It's also very important to realize that we have dual enrollment. We have senior privilege. So if you're a senior and you're on track, you can choose to not start school until second period, or you can choose to leave during sixth period or at the end of sixth period. So when I say 2,000 students, those students could replicate. So I could be a STEM student at the FM College and Career Academy, who's also counted on one of the base schools, and they could be a work-based learning student, and they could be a dual enrollment student. We have some students that are juniors right now, and they're in dual enrollment with Georgia Southern. And they also take classes at the STEM Academy, and they also take CTA classes there. So it is truly a moving target. So when you see that there's 4,000 students at our high schools, you have to keep in mind that at no point in time are all of them at those base high schools at one time. Never, there's never a point in time where they're all there. So currently, Effingham County High School, you know, is 2,170 students. With the addition that we have, they'll be able to grow to 2,500. There's not 2,000 kids there at any point in time during the school day. So as a district, over that five-year period, we grew nearly 1,500 students, and so that's about 306 per year. Nobody really knows what the future holds. I think it goes in valleys. You know, we have good interest rates at times. Right now, interest rates are a little up, so we're not seeing that much movement in our school district. So I think it just, it depends on which year. And so we have to have a balancing act of how soon do we plan? Because we certainly don't want to build schools that are empty. We built Rankin Elementary over off of Fort Howard Road nine years ago, eight years ago, for $21 million. We're building the exact same replica, except we're flipping the gym and the cafeteria, same layout, and it's double. The Creekside Elementary, we used the same architect, same builder, made a few adjustments just to, we're a little bit more energy efficient, but it's no difference. It's just double the price. All right, so our current enrollment and then space available, because I do want to kind of touch on this, because space available can be a little misleading. Blandford Elementary, I'll use an example, currently has 989 students. Their capacity is 1,070, so it's showing that they have 81 spaces available. And you can go down and you can see where Geikin Elementary has negative 70, and Springfield Elementary has a negative 31. And all that is based on the number of classrooms and us using a formula that says, we're going to put 20, 25 kids in that classroom, no more, no less. And that's not reality when you start breaking it down by which programs you have. You have some programs that may entail having special needs students, where you can only have 12 in there. You may have a class that's a resource that can only have 15. Or you may have a regular A classroom that can certainly have more than that. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. You'll see at the bottom that we plan to open up Creekside Elementary. That will open up in the fall of 2026. That obviously doesn't have any students in it now, but that is a replica of Rankin Elementary, and it will be able to house 1,200 students. And I think that will put us in good shape, in a pretty good location where we'll be able to pull from many different directions from the county to try to help with that. There's one thing that's super, super important to us, really at the elementary level, is our small class sizes. And then we certainly put a lot of emphasis on smaller class sizes at the middle school level for academics and also at the high school level as well. So our current enrollment at our middle schools, we have, ECMS has 1,054, Ebenezer has 1,037, and South Effingham Middle School has 1164. And you can see that if you've looked at any of the things that we've done over the last two years, we did a big addition at South Effingham Middle School. So it is showing a large available space there. We do have plans in the future where we're able to add on to the other two middle schools. We're going to have to do a little bit of staging work at Ebenezer Middle School. Before we can do that, we've got to get some of that traffic off the road before we do any type of addition there. And then, of course, we have some opportunities at Effingham County Middle School to do some additions there as well. And you may be asking, why not just build a new middle school? Well, a new middle school would be about $50 million. And I could do two additions on these schools for half of that, maybe even a little bit less. And so we're still able to function very effectively, still be able to have smaller class sizes. And really, that's about the limit you would be able to add on to your middle school. South Middle School will not be able to add on anymore there unless you increase your cafeteria and at the two other middle schools. If you did a large addition, you would have to increase your media center as well. That's required by the state. And so you look at our high schools, both of them are set at a capacity now for 2,200. We do have plans to do an addition at South Effingham High School, like the addition we're doing at Effingham County High School right now. And I really think that should push us down the road quite some time, unless, you know, our county has some influx like Forsyth County or Henry County had back in the late 80s, early 90s, then I think we'll be okay for quite some time from a high school standpoint. High school's so much different now than it was when we went to school. I mean, we have so many kids now that they're ready. When you say move on when ready, we have kids that, you know, we always thought about that move on when ready. That was your higher achievers. That was your higher academic students. And we have a lot of kids that are participating in dual enrollment as a junior and a senior. But we have, I have almost 80 kids at our alternative school. And believe it or not, we have several of those kids at Crossroads Academy. They're graduating a year early, and they're starting Savannah Tech, or they're graduating on time. And during that senior year, they never step foot on campus. They're at Savannah Tech. They're working on a trade. And so truly, when we say move on when ready, that's all students. And the most important thing that we can do as a school district is make sure we put those students in the right opportunities so that they can move on when they're ready. And so I think our high schools are going to be in pretty good shape for some time. So as a district, you can kind of look at, if we look at what the available space looks like today, it's about 1,300 available spaces. And then you really have to dive deep into each school, each program, each grade level to see where those hotspots are. I asked Chairman Ron to give you guys a handout that I passed out to him. Hopefully, you guys will be able to look at it. And I really just wanted to talk a little bit about class sizes. And, you know, in Effingham County, our Board really, really works hard to maintain small class sizes. And we do a good job as a Board of attending our schools. As a Board, we attend the first and second Wednesday of each month. We go have lunch at a school, and then we walk and we visit classrooms. And so we can get a firsthand look at what the classrooms look like, what the class sizes look like. Does what we have on paper, is that what we're seeing? And so we have a very keen eye on that. And so what I put in front of you, just as an example for you to take with you, if you look at the one that says South Effingham Elementary Class Sizes for this current year, you can see our kindergartners, I just labeled the teachers as kindergarten A, kindergarten B, all the way down to E. They teach all subjects. Their class size, their current class size is 16. If you look at that kindergarten teacher A, she has 16 students in her class. The minimum funding level is 15. And what that means is, if you go to the Georgia Department of Education and you look at what the base salary is for a teacher coming out of college with a T4, which is a bachelor's degree, the state says if you have at least 15 kids in that class, you should be able to pay for that teacher. Well, there's a couple of caveats with that. Number one, we got a lot of kids that start school working with us, that they've already got their master's degree. But more importantly, our pay scale in Effingham County, which is all local funds, is a little bit higher than what the state offers. So the state does offer us part of that, but because the school system's salary schedule is a little bit higher than the state base with a local supplement, so we can be very competitive with our local districts that we compete with, 15 students will not supply, you know, the correct amount of money for one teacher. And then you can see where it says a class max size of 20. In a perfect world, we would love to only have 20 kindergartners in that class. And so occasionally, you'll see in the paperwork that you're looking, whether it's first grade or second grade, and those class sizes, you might see a second grade class that says the class max is 21 and there's 23 in there. Well, that doesn't mean that you have to immediately go and open another classroom. You don't do that. You definitely want to make sure if you're in mid-year, obviously, if you had, you know, 12 or 13 or 14 new kids in that grade level move in, you would want to open up a new classroom. But you don't find many really, really, really good teachers when you just advertise in October, or if you advertise in April. And so you got to be very careful about when you choose to do that and when you make that decision. So lower class sizes obviously take up additional space, but that definitely does not indicate that the school is overcrowded. For example, we've got specialty programs in some of our schools, in all of our schools, where there may only be eight kids in a class, but that's just what the state requires us. And so there takes a lot of equipment and a lot of different type of funding levels for them to have that classroom. Any questions about those funding sizes? I gave you two examples, one of Rankin Elementary and one of South Effingham Elementary School. And we work, we look every week at funding and class sizes.
Have you given this information to some of your teachers? Because some of them, everyone's complained online.
They have. They get it, absolutely. Yeah, this is public information. I mean, this is nothing to hide. This is exactly from our, we use a platform called Infinite Campus. That's our student information system. And so it's drawn directly down from that. That's how we schedule. And so that comes directly from our instructional supervisors at the schools. And so we look at these every Monday, along with, you know, who's enrolled, where they come from, what grade level, and just so that we can plan ahead. So as we're planning for growth, what we're doing from a school district standpoint, we're opening Creekside Elementary in the fall of 2026. As I said earlier, we're doing those additions at both high schools. We have plans to do additions at our two middle schools, and we've already done an addition at South Middle. We have a Performing Arts Center coming that will also have 10 classrooms in it, have a drama room, and it will seat 1,800 people. I mean, we have two drama, really strong drama programs at our high schools, and we have a couple at our middle schools that do phenomenal jobs, and they take up a lot of space. And so this particular Performing Arts Center will allow them to kind of have a place to call home. The school district owns land, I think it's approximately 80 acres maybe behind the current Rankin Elementary, for somewhere down the road for a Rankin Middle School. And then we'll hopefully not need that for some time. And then, of course, we're always looking for future areas where we can build new schools.
Dr. Ford, is that Performing Arts Center, is that the one at ECCA, or is that?
That's the one that will be located next to Savannah Tech. And then there's also, you know, behind it, Savannah Tech is building the Jack Hill Conference Center. And so that will be a really, really nice facility between the two, where you'll be able to have banquets, and we'll actually be able to share a kitchen. We've been working together to make sure there's no reason to have two full kitchens in those two facilities. Most caterers bring stuff in anyhow and don't do a lot of the full kitchens there. And so, you know, what I'll say is, you know, we're continuing to keep our eye on growth. We're continuing to work really hard to make sure that, you know, as the Planning Board and the Commissioners approve developments, we pay very close attention to it. I know each one of you have reached out to me occasionally whenever, you know, there's been things that's come up. And so I appreciate that. I know my Board appreciates us having that good communication to make sure that if there is an issue, that we're working together. We're getting a lot of growth. And, you know, there's some growing pains that come with growth. Most of you, I mean, if not all of you, you know, probably have seen the growth that we've had on, you know, our highways and as you guys are trying to catch up with infrastructure. And it just takes time. It doesn't just happen overnight. But very appreciative of the work that our bus drivers do every day, very appreciative of, as we continue to look at redistricting, as we've got to move kids around, which as we've got to move kids around, which redistricting's never a fun process to go through. Nobody likes to move schools. It doesn't matter which school you go to, families and parents and kids want to remain there. And one of the things that we've always done in our school district, and we'll plan to do the same thing when we open Creekside Elementary, is if a student's zoned for, say, South Effingham Elementary, and they get zoned to another school, we allow that family, if they so choose, and transport them. We allow them to finish out that time at that school. And our board's always done that, and I don't foresee us changing from that, you know. We're putting a lot of emphasis, I know if you guys will give me an opportunity to speak a little bit on school safety, I'd love to be able to just kind of give you guys an update on what we've done over the years in school safety. We've invested a tremendous amount of time and energy and money in cameras and locking systems and security vegetables. Unfortunately, Friday, we had a student that brought a handgun on campus at South Effingham High School. And, you know, we made a decision that day that we needed to move forward with metal detectors. And day one, it took a little while to get every kid in school. I think South Effingham High School got everybody in school by nine, and Effingham High was a little closer to ten. Today, school was supposed to start at eight-twenty, by eight-thirty-five, eight-forty, everybody was in class. And so just in that one day, our students figured out, all right, I don't need to bring my whole suitcase to school. I need to leave a lot of those things at home. You know, they were more educated on what would go off and what I need to put in the basket. And, you know, at the end of the day, I would have never thought we would have gotten to a point where we would had to do metal detectors. I really wouldn't have thought that we'd have gotten to a point that we would have had classroom cameras and security vegetables, but it's where we're at right now. And the most important thing our school board wants to make sure we're doing is protecting our students and our staff. And that's what we want to do. And we're gonna continue to roll out metal detectors. We're just using the three high schools to make sure we get it right, get the process right, make sure we group up each and every day and have conversations about what went good today, what do we need to change. And we're getting feedback from teachers. We've even got some feedback from students. I got a few emails last night from students about, hey, have you thought about doing this? And so that, I mean, that's great. That means they're also being a part of the solution. And we're just very thankful that we're able to do that. So you guys have any questions about growth or anything about school safety? Or, I mean, I'd be glad to answer anything that you may have.
I do want to commend you guys on something happened in Friday and Monday morning, we having metal detectors. That was phenomenal. This quick action, smart action. I know you and a lot of the people worked very hard to do that, and I really appreciate that. And I know a lot of other people do, too.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, Roger. And there's, you know, there's a lot of people that you gotta thank for that. You got, you know, a lot of school staff. And, you know, we took twenty-five central office people, and we said, you don't start at central office until further notice. You're gonna start at one of these high schools, and you're going to be working with these administrators and teachers, because there's no way they could have rolled it out alone. And we're committed to staying there until we get this process ironed out. And then, you know, we'll move over to the middle schools and make sure we get that process ironed out. Because at the end of the day, I don't want, I want schools to be safe havens, and I want students to feel like that is their safe
One question for you. Your expansions at the high school and middle school, when do you anticipate they'll be maxed out? Would that be after the next expansion that you did? And the reason I'm asking the question is what leads you to, you know, your next school ultimately?
Yeah, I think twenty-five-hundred's about the largest high school you want to build. I don't think that you want to get much bigger than that. I think twenty-five-hundred's kind of the max, in my opinion. Depends on who you ask. I know that there's some neighboring counties that are building, they built some really, really large high schools. You know, I was always a believer of small elementary schools, seven-fifty. But unfortunately, as we grew so fast and the cost of things went up, it was much cheaper for us to add on and still be able to be functional and efficient and be safe. But the elementary schools that we have added on to, excluding, so we haven't done anything at Springfield, we haven't done anything at Guyton, and we haven't done anything at Marlowe yet, those are the only three elementary schools that we would be able to do something else in regards to addition for pre-K through fifth grade. The other schools are fairly maxed out for a couple reasons. One, I think you get to twelve-hundred, that's about as many elementary students as you want. But the state has some pretty strict requirements in regards to how big your media center has to be, and your cafeteria, and how many classrooms you gotta have.
Thank you. Go ahead.
In that regard, I think South Effingham Elementary, that one is maxed because of space, isn't it? Or is it, do you have room?
It's space, it's landlocked.
Landlocked, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's not much more you can do, right? You could go up. I'm not necessarily a big fan of two-story elementary schools, or really. I mean, it works well for our Career Academy on the STEM side, but traditionally, we've kind of not been in favor of going up. But, and you don't save a ton of cost when you do that. It's just, it's a supervision nightmare.
Yeah. It sounds like you're mitigating that with the Creekside anyway, and some redistricting will take care of that. So I wanted to open the floor briefly for any public questions. If anybody, any questions for Dr. Ford?
Yes, sir. How many police officers do you have at your high school during classes?
So we've got two resource officers that are at each of the high schools, at Effingham High and South High. We have one at the Career Academy. And then we have one at each one of our elementary and middle schools. And we actually spoke with John Penny, who's our head of our SRO division, about a month ago, to adding two additional ones that can be roamed or some of those out.
You say resource officers, you know, police?
Yes, sir. They're employees of, it's a county school, they're employees of the Effingham County Sheriff's Department. At Rankin Elementary, they're employees of the city of Rankin. Springfield Elementary, they're employees of the city of Springfield. And Guyton Elementary, they're employees of the city of Guyton. So they are, they're not employed by the school district. We have a MOU that we partner with them, but they're, I mean, they're sworn officers. They have to go to, you know, SRO school, which is a little, some added training that they have to get versus just, you know, coming off the streets. Yes, sir, absolutely.
No further questions? Dr. Ford, thank you. Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank y'all. We appreciate y'all.
I think it's very important that, you know, some of the information, it gets out, it comes from you. And hopefully, also, we'll be making this available on our Effingham Facebook page for the public as well. I'm sorry, I wasn't here for distribution prior. Very good. Okay. Moving along to item number ten, our consent agenda. This section shall include all routine items for which there will be no discussion. Should a need arise for debate, the item can be moved to the appropriate area of the agenda. Mr. Burdette, I understand you had a question concerning item number one.
Correct. I remember correctly when we get to it. I was just concerned about the dates on there, because it was supposed to be a five-year deal. The original agreement was twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-two. So we did another one in twenty-twenty-two, so that, I think that would fast forward that to twenty-twenty-seven. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? That motion carries.
Moving on to item number eleven here.
We are unfinished business, contains item held from a previous agenda. Item number one, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Booth-Lern Management. Scott Rosenstock is agent for Charles L. to resume plus-minus one-hundred-point-three-four acres from AR one to R five to allow for residential development located on Blue Jay Road, to allow for residential development located on Blue Jay Road, map number three-five-one, parcel number three, in the first district.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries.
Nope, nope. You didn't ask for that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
One no.
One no. Thank you, Ms. Beth. I'm sorry.
Didn't work for us.
Almost caught you slipping there. All right. Moving to new business. Consideration to approve resolution number zero-two-five-dash-zero, approve resolution number zero-two-five-dash-zero-zero-seven, authorizing the zero-seven, authorizing the attorney representing the county to institute necessary legal action through condemnation for property.
Mr. Chairman, Jonathan Holm, county engineer for Effingham. Parcel three has identified in Exhibit A is being recommended for condemnation of the point zero-zero-five acres, along with the temporary easements that are associated with the construction of the roundabout at Colley, Kimble, and Hotchville. Staff is recommending moving forward with the resolution.
Any questions? I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number one B from our consent. Consideration to approve to allow the mutual aid agreement with the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals to Continue.
Yes, sir. Danielle Carver, procurement and capital and contracts manager. I just needed to correct that the agreement's effective from April the fourth, twenty-twenty-two to April the fourth, twenty-twenty-seven.
You're good.
And then with automatic five-year renewals.
Good. Thank you for that clarification, Danielle. Can I have a motion with the noted corrections of the agreement is affected from April fourth, twenty-twenty-two to April fourth, twenty-twenty-seven?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. New business item number two, consideration to approve to endorse a letter to the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission to prepare a memorandum of agreement allowing Effingham County to review and approve plans for land disturbing activity permits.
Yes, sir. Jonathan Holm again, county engineer. This letter is just to notify the council that Effingham County is wanting to review in-house for erosion control plans instead of sending private development to GSWCC up in Athens. The reason why we're wanting to make this request is to help expedite the permitting process. Sometimes it can take GSWCC well, you know, beyond forty-five days or so to get plans. So with this letter, I mean, again, it would help expedite it, you know, to help, you know, aid development in the county. And a lot of this stuff, we're already looking at anyway, as far as stormwater goes, along with the grading and scheming and plan. So it just makes sense to kind of help make it a little bit more efficient process as far as review goes and to serve our community better. Staff's recommending alternative one.
Very good. Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions from the commission? I'll ask for a motion.
Question, will you approve alternative one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, consideration to approve an assemblage permit for the Effingham County Shrine Club for the second annual ham jam concert located at twelve-fifty-eight Corinth Church Road, map number three-eleven, parcel number ten, in the third district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Effingham County Shrine Club would like to hold its second annual ham jam concert on April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, beginning at five o'clock PM. Staff did meet with the applicant for a technical review committee meeting on February fourth, and we did discuss safety regulations, parking, food and beverages, the anticipated attendance. There will also be food trucks on site. They have met the regulations for the Department of Public Health. And there will also be approximately twenty RVs and campers that will be staying on site for the duration of the event and overnight. So which is why we didn't want to put this on consent agenda as well. So staff is recommending approval with the condition that all parking shall be contained on twelve-fifty-eight Corinth Church Road property as exhibited on the site plan.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have anyone here from the Shriners present? I want to give you the opportunity to explain it out.
Yes, sir. I'm Glenn Edwards, Vice President of Effingham Shrine Club and organizer of the concert. So all the parking is going to be on premises of that in the field. Of course, you've seen it, seen the plan of it. So all the parking is going to be in the field. RVs, everything is going to be in the field. So there's no encroachments on any highways around. We will have two deputies on site also doing security through the Sheriff's Department. So, and last year, we had no issues whatsoever.
I was more so giving you the opportunity to talk about what events will be going on there than the
Well, we're gonna have
But thank you for the explanation.
As of right now, we have two food trucks that's gonna be there. Big Dog is gonna be there. Big Dog Snow Cones and a barbecue trailer from Swainsboro. We're gonna have that. Also, Cole Goodman's gonna be singing. Josh Sanders is gonna be singing. We're gonna start at festivities. Gates open at five o'clock. Concert starts around six, six-thirty. It's all according. I mean, we trying, we pushing for having way more people than we had last year. We had about four-hundred-and-fifty there last year. Our goal this year is seven-hundred-plus. So looking forward for a good time. Looking forward for everybody to be here. If you have any questions or comments, of course, it's all over Facebook advertising now, so.
Very, very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm going to move to item number five, a new business, and then we're gonna take a short pause.
Well, we have to prove that.
We gotta act on this.
Yeah, we gotta act on this one.
You need a motion, Mr. Chairman, on?
Yes, I was gonna run through item number five really quick first and then take a pause afterwards, but that's fine. Like a motion to do a temporary adjournment before our six o'clock.
We gotta finish, finish the assemblage permit.
Oh, Jesus.
You hit the head.
All right, guys. Thank you for keeping me on track.
Make a motion to approve the assemblage permit as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. I thought it was so good, we didn't even need to prove it. So, thank you. Now, I will ask for a motion to move to a break before our planning is done.
Six PM, yeah.
Very good. All right, we'll be back here at six PM sharp. All right, we'll be back here at 6:00 PM sharp. All right, everyone, if we could start getting seated, please.
Yeah, that's right.
Do you think having one on the other side would help that? Because there's not enough room on the side of the Dollar General. Their properties are too close to the other side. That's a pushback. Well, a lot of people didn't...
Board. As discussed, items 1 through 4 have been removed or and/or postponed. Moving on to item number five, we've had a public hearing. Consideration of an application by Kristin McNamara requesting a variance from Section 3.41.3 located at 149 Laurel Lane for reduction in the minimum required pool setbacks. Map number 347C, parcel number 49 in the 2nd District. Is the applicant here?
Elizabeth is first out tonight.
Good evening.
Yes, hold, hold one second, please. Elizabeth, do you want to come up? I'm sorry.
Good evening. Liz Sapland, Land Use Planning Analyst. Christina McNarin requests a variance from ordinance Section 3.41.3 to allow for reduction in required pool setbacks located at 149 Laurel Lane, Zoned R1, map parcel number 374C, parcel number 49. The applicant requests a variance from Section 3.41.3 to allow for the reduction in required pool setbacks. The applicant would like the pool setbacks to remain at six feet instead of 10 feet from the resident, from the residential dwelling. The requirements for swimming pools are as follows, 10 feet from all property lines and 10 feet from any dwelling. Swimming pools are prohibited in front yards of any agricultural and or residential zoning district. Staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete.
Thank you. It's your turn now.
Good evening.
Do you have any explanation as to...
Uh, yes, I mean...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Name and address, please.
Glenn McNamara, 149 Laurel Lane. Generally, the 14-foot pool, the width of that pool was, how I should say, the most common size. Once we started looking at trying to fit into that variance, given our backyard dimensions, that price got increasingly expensive because it becomes a custom pool at the 10-foot width, which is the only thing that would work with the variance from the property line and the dwelling. So we're requesting that four-foot total variance, and honestly, it doesn't, it could be the whole four foot from the dwelling, or it could be two and two, however, the commission sees fit.
Thank you. Any other questions from our commissioners?
No, we'll hear it out now.
Thank you.
Yes.
I said he's going to hold a public hearing.
Is anyone here in opposition? If so, please come forward. If not, I'll now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'd like to discuss it, but, Jimmy, I'll let you go, Roger.
Go right ahead.
My opinion, and I know we changed these recently, and I honestly was not, even when we approved them, wasn't real thrilled on the 10-feet setback. I like the angle of repose because of six-foot deep, you know, that's just a geometric calculation on the structural, which if, I don't know how deep the pool is, but a six-foot deep pool on a 45-degree angle of repose, right, would be a six-foot setback. I mean, that just makes sense to me. Where did the 10-foot come from? Was it just, just kind of a catch-all, again, a safety?
Because we have 10-foot, uh, sorry.
That's the purpose behind...
I think, that, that, yes.
We don't want them diving off the roof either. That's what I wanted to ask.
Because pools are accessory structures, they're treated the same as all the accessory structures, even though they're not the same as all the other accessory structures. So they could do an angle repose versus accessory structures that can't, pole barns, et cetera.
Steve, while you're up, what is the property behind the home there?
The triangle that's got trees on it?
So that would be here.
Very good.
Arrow one vacant.
Great. Thank you. We're done?
Any problems with the variance itself tonight?
No, I don't. In fact, I wouldn't be opposed to revisiting the ordinance.
Yeah, me too, me too. Yeah, I don't see a problem. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number six. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Kristin McNamara requesting a variance from Section 3.41.3 located at 149 Laurel Lane for reduction in the minimum required pool setbacks. Map number 347C, parcel number 49 in the 2nd District. Ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Now we'll open a public hearing. Item number seven. Consideration of an application by Stephen Amerson requesting a conditional use for a rural business located at 353 Webb Road for custom coating of vehicles, Zoned AR1, map number 389, parcel number 20 in the 4th District. Chelsea?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant is requesting that conditional use for a rural business for custom vehicle coating. The applicant would like to move their business from the city of Rincon to their home in Springfield due to an ownership change of the location. The applicant has stated that there will be one truck per day serviced and that the material used does not contain volatile organic compounds. The future land use map does have this parcel projected to be agricultural residential. Staff has reviewed the application and it is complete with the following conditions: that the service of vehicles on this parcel shall be limited to a maximum of one vehicle per day; hours of operation shall be restricted to daylight hours only; and any residual, residual, excuse me, any residue resulting from spraying activities shall be fully contained within the building.
Sir.
This is Steve Amerson with Liquid Liners, just requesting a variance from the three acres to 1.4 acres to move my business to the house because we're losing our spot in Rincon.
So that's also the next item as well.
Okay. Very good, I'm trying to see the property here.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here in opposition to this? If so, please come forward. If not, I'll now close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions from you guys?
I don't, do they use a spray booth? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if, what the process is. I'm just curious, just asking.
Yeah, it's, it's not a spray booth, it's just a passive filtration system.
Gotcha.
And, you know, most of the material that's sprayed, it's not like painting, there's not a huge amount of overspray floating in the air. Most of it's heavy and gets on the ground. But we do have a filter system to catch all what little bit of overspray there is.
Okay.
So there would be no harm to the environment, nothing would, nothing would go in the ground or, I mean, like you said, like air or anything? It would not, the odorous odor or anything like that? No, because the spot we're at now in Rincon, they park cars, which is about three feet from my filter thing, and nothing gets on anything there.
That was my biggest, my biggest concern was the smell more than anything.
Right.
I understand, I understand.
We're a little sensitive to that.
Yeah, we're a little sensitive to smells around here.
Right, right.
Very good. Any further questions? Okay. You said it'll be one, and what would be your hours of operation?
Eight, eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Okay, and that'll be one drop-off vehicle?
Yeah, there's no retail, no nothing like that.
Very good.
Just appointment type?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
If no further questions, I'll ask for a motion.
Fourth District, that's me.
I'll move.
You good?
Yep.
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, the motion carries. Item number eight. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Stephen Amerson requesting a conditional use for a rural business located at 353 Webb Road for custom coatings of vehicles, Zoned AR1, map number 389, parcel number 20 in the 4th District. Ask for a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, the motion carries. Item number nine. Consideration of an application by Stephen Amerson requesting a variance from Section 3.15B located at 353 Webb Road to allow for the reduction in the required minimum of three acres for a rural business. Map number 389, parcel number 20 in the 4th District. I'll now open this public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So again, the applicant would like to conduct that rural business for coating vehicles at the parcel. The Effingham County Code of Ordinance, Section 3.15B, does state that for the rural business, the property shall contain at least three acres of land. The applicant's property is a total of 1.38 acres, so the variance will be for 1.62 acres. Staff has reviewed the application and it is complete.
Very good, thank you. Any, Miss Amerson, do you have anything you want to add to this? Very good. Is anyone here in opposition? If not, I'll now close the public hearing. Any questions from our commission? Being there are none, I'll ask for a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Moving on to our second reading. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Stephen Amerson requesting a variance from Section 3.15B located at 353 Webb Road to allow for the reduction in the minimum, required minimum of three acres for a rural business. Map number 389, parcel number 20 in the 4th District. Ask for a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number 11. The Planning Board recommends approving an application by Charlita at Blackwa, sorry if I butchered that, to rezone plus or minus 6.20 acres located at 550 Brogdon Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2. Map number 319, parcel number 23 in the 3rd District. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. Again, the applicant is requesting to rezone the 6.20 acres to AR2 because that can, the conforming AR1 zoning shall have five acres or more, and the applicant would like to subdivide the parcel into smaller lots. The zoning will need to change to AR2. You do have the permitted uses by right in AR2 zoning on your staff report. The applicant wants to keep the current home on the property as a 3.205 acre tract and then create three one-acre tracks along Williams Road. The future land use map does project this parcel as agricultural residential. Staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete.
Thank you. And I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant available? Will you please tell me how to pronounce your last name properly?
Yes, sir, I'm Charlita Abloqua.
Got it. Very good. Do you have anything further you'd like to add to this at all?
No, we're going to keep our homestead life.
Perfect, perfect, thank you, ma'am.
Do you have a question? What type of homes are you going to put on there? Are you just going to sell the lots or are you planning on putting...
Yeah, we just wanted to have our homestead on the three and then the back three for like family, investment, family reasons, so if a family member wants to do something on the lot, they'll be able to have that on.
I see, so it's just for your family?
Any further questions from the commission? Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone here in opposition? Being there are none, I'll now close the public hearing. Any discussion from the commission? Being there isn't, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion we approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, the motion carries. Item number 12. Consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Charlita Abloqua to rezone plus or minus 6.20 acres located at 550 Brogdon Road from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2. Map number 319, parcel number 23 in the 3rd District. Ask for a motion.
Make a motion we approve the second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Item number 13. Planning Board recommends approving an application by Peterson Duperville to rezone to rezone plus or minus five acres located at 116 Oak Street from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2. Map number 450D, parcel number 11 in the second district. Chelsea?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, the applicant is requesting to rezone five acres to AR2. Um, because they, um, would like to subdivide the parcel into smaller lots. Um, the zoning would need to change to that AR2 zoning. Um, the applicant is requesting to subdivide into three lots. Um, and again, you have those, um, uses permitted by right in the AR2 zoning on your staff report. The future land use map does show this parcel as agricultural resident, residential, excuse me, and staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete.
Very good, thank you, Chelsea. I'll now open the public hearing. Is the applicant available?
State your name, please, sir. My name is Peterson Duperville.
Very good. Is there, um, any questions from our commission? Well, Mr. Duperville's up.
Same question. What would be the intent?
Um, to be a residential housing.
Housing or would be any trailers or anything like that?
No, no.
Steve, okay. So we'll make sure we maintain the character of the neighborhoods.
That's right.
Thank you. Any further questions? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Duperville.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone here in opposition to this? Being there are none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number 14, consideration to approve the second reading of an application by Peterson Duperville to rezone plus or minus five acres located at 116 Oak Street from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2. Map number 450D, parcel number 11 in the second district. Ask for a motion.
Make a motion, approve the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Item number 15, the planning board recommends approving an application by Neil McKenzie as agent for Nick Finland to rezone plus or minus 221.87 acres located on Goshen Road from AR1 to R5 to allow for residential development. Map number 451, parcel number 41 in the second district. Chelsea?
Yes, sir. So, um, this application was received on June 19th, 2024 before the commencement of the moratorium on August 20, 2024. Um, the applicant is requesting to rezone 221.87 acres to the R5 zoning to allow for residential development, a proposal of 377 units. Um, the second emergency access will need to be, um, required, uh, for the proposed development. Um, and the proposed development has a second, they, they have a secondary, um, emergency access under contract. That contract, um, was submitted to you guys. You should have that in your packet as well. Oh, sorry. Um, the Goshen widening project is estimated to be completed, um, April of 2028 with the development falling in the second phase of that project. There are also roundabouts going at the Effingham Parkway, estimated to be completed September of 2025. And Hodgeville Road estimated to be completed September of 2026. Um, the future land use map does have this parcel projected to be agricultural residential. Um, at the planning board meeting, Mr. Jake Patrick, uh, motioned for approval but did add two conditions. That only up to 120 homes may get a certificate of occupancy until the secondary emergency access easement is fully established and the Goshen Road improvements are completed. And that a 50 foot wide vegetated buffer with a berm shall be placed along the south property line. Um, staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete.
Thank you, Chelsea. I'll now open the public hearing. Neil, floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Uh, my name is Neil McKenzie here on behalf of the property owner. Uh, tonight petitioning the county to, uh, rezone 221 acres from AR1 to R5. As part of this package, um, we're asking for just the standard R5 classification with, um, no change from the base, uh, standards as written. In addition, we're offering some additional buffering, um, to, to kind of help shield this from the neighbors. Uh, from a density standpoint, the, uh, the R5 classification allows five units per acre. Um, based on the upland acres of about 115 acres, uh, we would be coming in at a density of about 3.3 per acre. For the buffering, as Chelsea mentioned, uh, there is a large natural buffer between the, the front of this proposed project and the homes that are up front, you know, you know, along Goshen Road. And then additionally, we're bounded by two railroad, um, lines on the east and west side of the property. Um, part of the plan is also to propose a 50 foot, uh, buffer against the homes that are on the south side of the property. Um, in addition to the buffer, um, it would have a berm with, um, plantings on top of the berm. Um, from, from a, uh, site plan standpoint, um, because of the amount of, of wetland and open space and buffering on this plan, uh, we're able to offer about 35% um, of the land as open s- space. Typical to your, you know, to a, a development like this, we would, um, plan to build a complete amenity package. With this many homes, you know, you would expect a pool and a, and a, and a clubhouse and dog parks, that type of thing. Um, it's yet to be determined what that program is, but with this many homes, you know, I, I would imagine that would be part of it. From a, from a site planning standpoint, um, stormwater management will be, you know, handled in our normal way. Um, we've got detention ponds on site that'll discharge to the wetlands. Um, and this wetlands band that in, is on the north side of the site is the headwaters of Black Creek. Um, so, so it all drains to the west and then curls around and then drains east back under, um, uh, 21, um, to the river. From, there are flood zones on the property. Um, it is an undetermined A-zone. Um, but due to the, the topographical fall over the site, um, the A-zone is contained within the wetland. So we don't anticipate having any impacts on the flood zones on the site other than the road crossing to get back to this neighborhood. Um, as far as access points go, we do, uh, we have one main access point. Um, you know, the lot on its own is a flag lot. It's got a, you know, it's got a narrow piece that comes out and fronts on the Goshen Road. And as Chelsea mentioned, um, because of the number of homes that we would propose back here, we do have another piece of property under contract for the other access point, and that's at 665, uh, that addresses 665. And, um, that access point would not be open to the public. Um, it would be, it would be a controlled access point just for emergency access. Uh, for utilities, um, the project will be served with county water and sewer. And, um, we discussed this with staff and, uh, you know, adequate capacity would be available in 2027. Uh, Chelsea did mention the, uh, upgrades to, you know, to the main corridor between Effingham Parkway and 21. Um, and we do anticipate that, uh, that, that, that we, we would be building this project in phases to align with those, with those improvements. From a project schedule standpoint, you know, a, a project of this size takes a long time to get off the ground and get underway. Um, if we were to be approved tonight, um, I'm just gonna speak as, you know, as quickly as we could get things done and just kind of, just, just, just lay out what dates we would be looking at. So if we were to be approved tonight, um, we'd have another 12 months of engineering and permitting. So that gets us to March of 26. Once the plans are approved, uh, we probably have an additional six months of site preparation. So that gets us to third quarter, end of Sep-, um, end of 26. Um, and then another five to six months of the first homes to be constructed. So your first homes wouldn't even be online until, um, the first quarter of 2027. And that's as fast as it could possibly be done. So, so I, I think there's, there's some time in here to address utilities and the needs of the traffic. So as far as the conditions that the planning board placed on us, um, we accept those with no issue. Um, the 120, uh, max cap, um, until the improvements are completed, uh, we would, wouldn't be able to, 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 um, get that many homes on the ground by the time those improvements are completed anyway. So we do accept that. Um, we did offer the buffer, um, with the berm. So that's now as, you know, been included as part of the site plan. And, um, looking forward to a, a good project with the county. So, um, be glad to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Neil. Commissioners, any questions for Neil while he's here?
Yeah, I got a few. What's the minimum square footage on the homes?
So, um, it's not defined yet, but I would think so. The, 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 the lots are 6,600 square feet. Um, and we could back into what that maximum, you know, that minimum size could, could be with the setbacks. So if we have, uh, uh, 40 foot wide home, um, in a 60 foot deep pad, I mean, that's 2,400 square feet. Uh, you know, that would fit within the setback. But I do anticipate these to be multi-story possibly. We don't know what the builder will build yet.
So there's no minimum?
Not as of right now.
Is there a builder?
What's that?
Is there a builder?
There's not yet.
There's not a builder?
Not a builder yet.
Are all the lots the same size?
They're all the same size.
Larger lots? They're all, okay.
That's right.
Any off-street parking?
Um, so we, we, we would incorporate that into the amenity plan. Um, the R5 classification does have the wider road widths. Um, we could certainly add in off-street parking as part of the plan. We have a lot of open s- space. So when we do the preliminary plat, we would offer additional parking.
That's somewhere we're trying to, to get to where we don't have, in a neighborhood this size, we don't have a lot of parking in the street, so.
How much open space without, without wetlands?
Uh, so I think that we have, um, I have to look back at the numbers here, but, um, we do have a good portion of it that is, that is wetlands. Um, I would say, let me see what we have for total wetlands here. So we have 70... We, we have 100 acres of wetlands. Um, so probably, um, about 30% of that would be open s- space, I think. Hard to... We have a lot of pond on here that takes up a lot of what would be open s- space. Um, but it looks like we, we would have... So we've got 79 acres total, but only 50% of the wetlands were counted. So, um, looks like we've got 26 acres of open space.
Without wetlands?
Without wetlands, yeah.
Hard to see that on this drawing.
Yeah, I didn't see, I didn't see that earlier.
I mean, my math could be wrong here, but I'm just looking at it on the fly.
The, uh, other access, I looked at some of the parcels. It looked like every other parcel had homes on it. So are they gonna remove the homes on these other access, on this other access, or what, what?
Yes, sir. So at 665, um, there is a driveway there. Um, they would have to, we would have to work the, you know, the access point to get around the home if the home was going to stay. I think as of now, the home would come down.
Is the intent to purchase this property or?
Yes, sir. It's under contract.
Very good. Roger, I'm gonna tune, um, just bring the opposition up and reserve more questions for you.
Only other question I had was, uh, price points. Any idea of that at this point, or?
I really don't know. I think that completely depends on the builder.
Price points, it was whatever.
Oh, okay. That's gonna be based on square footage, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Any, any further questions?
I have some. Um, on the, on the buffer, you said it was going to be a 50 foot buffer, vegetative. And you put some plants. So you're talking about just a big mound of dirt basically with plants?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so it's not a natural buffer? You would cut down all the trees first and then build that buffer?
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't think there's much of a, there's, there's much of one there. So when we worked with the neighbors, the, the ask was the berm. So, so that's why, why we put the berm there.
Speaking of the berm, where, where exactly would it be on this, the map that we have currently?
Um, so the, the, the white buffer along the bottom, this kind of an L shape that, that is adjacent to the residential homes. Um, that's where that would be, on the bottom side. So, I'm sorry.
That'd be a 50 foot buffer?
Right here.
Okay.
Right there.
And that's where a berm's gonna go?
Yes.
Vegetated. What about the other side?
Uh, this is rail and that's rail.
So there's nothing on those sides where it's adjacent to the industrial and the, uh, the other homes?
The rail has a buffer.
And at the very?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but no berm.
And the very top as well. Is there anything going there?
There's nothing at the top because of just the large wetland buffer that we have naturally.
Gotcha. Very good.
Um, on the, um, on the second aspect, you said that would be emergency only?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So in other words, for all these 300 plus houses, there would be one in and one out?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're talking about, if you just said three, if you said, say, four people per house, right? So you're talking about, what, 10,000? No, um, how many people? Four of them's?
1,500 cars. 1,200 cars.
Well, 1,200 cars and all the peo-, 1,200 minimum, and then you've got the, all the people in and out. There's a safety concern with me with that. Um, I, I don't, I don't, the emergency, yes, we get the fire trucks in, but the, uh, I'm concerned about that. Uh, the, on the flood zone too, this is a huge amount of wetland, and you said you don't anticipate any flooding. But you don't know it won't.
Well...
Once again, I'm, I'm talking about, we've already got one. We got a mess with Staffordshire. So, um, the last thing we need is something else similar.
Yes, ma'am. I wouldn't, uh, anticipate any flooding with this.
But you can't guarantee it.
Well, I would have to engineer the site, so, so I, I, I wouldn't think it would flood.
Seemed like I had, um... So, so just to confirm, you're, you're, you're not sure amenities are, are gonna be, you're not sure about the off-street parking? None of that's in place yet, right?
We would provide off-street parking.
Okay, I misunderstood you. I thought you said you didn't know about that.
No, we, we would. Um, as far as the price point in the product, we just don't know what, you know, we don't have a builder yet. So the, um, the, the product and the price point in the actual amenity package is to be determined.
That'll do me for the moment. Thank you.
Any further questions? If there's any opposition to this, please come forward, state your name. And, uh, I would, I would also ask that, uh, if, if opposition is here, um, please do add some new content, um, to each discussion.
I've got, um, I'm Jill Banks. Hey, Chelsea, do you mind pointing to, um? I, I can't read the plot number on the other screen that you had up there. Which one? Which one? The other one that showed the wetlands. Okay, so my house is like, if you're looking over here, so you count one, two, three, four. I'm the fourth plot that's kind of subdivided right, it's divided in the middle right there. The wetlands, thank you for people, I'm short.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, the wetlands, now they're only showing this on this map because this map is their development. But the wetlands goes railroad track to railroad track. And my ch-, my house sits where that little corner piece is right there. It sits right there. And 200 feet past my house starts the wetlands. And that is railroad track to railroad track. So where they've got on this map, uh, wetlands, you're gonna go all the way up to where this, this track up here is... So where they've got on this map, re- uh, wetlands, you're gonna go all the way up to where this, this track up here is divided. I can't read it 'cause it's so small, but it's the little track right there. It's got like, um, we're counting from six-six-five, it's one, two, three, four, the fifth one over, right there. So you're talking wetlands goes all the way up to where that line is. I'm like, I mean, that's my property. So um, on here, and I've got a couple of questions and things, I mean, we've asked the builders things and nobody really gets back to us, but when they put that fifty-foot berm up on the backside, on the south side of the property, are they gonna have to move those houses forward any? Because when they move the houses forward any, then they're gonna move all the property forward, they're gonna move all the building forward. It's gonna push into the wetlands. Right now, um, just to give you some statistics, in August, when the hurricane come through, we had eighteen inches of rain on the backside of our property, and our rain gauges. Um, whenever that hurricane in August come through. When the other one came through, it was about seven inches of rain. Um, the other tropical storm that came through this past summer, it was almost fourteen inches of rain. Okay, that's a lot of rain. Right now, we're under a severe burn ban in Effing- Effingham County in the state of Georgia. You can walk down the, um, there's a, beside our property and the Crowder's property, there's a ditch that the county has for drainage that they dug. You can walk down that right now and you're ankle-deep to knee-deep water. So when I say wetlands, it's true wetlands about there, but the other thing is when they brought it up the planning board, they didn't bother to tell one of us that owns property that touches up to Hi-Ho Farms or whatever this place is called now, they didn't tell any of us that we're now considered a flood zone. That's a big deal. When you're pushing all this forward and building that berm back there and all this stuff, we're now into a flood zone, so you're gonna push all that water up to my property. Now, here, like you said, this is like two to three thousand cars going in here. We've got a thousand car, houses going on Goshen Road. I don't know if you guys have drove by Goshen today, but they have had sub-pumps out there where they're putting in by the Learning Treehouse, pumping water left and right out of there where they're trying to put two-hundred-and-fifty apartments. The land that's back behind Grace Community Church is wet too. I used to Boy Scout camp out there all the time with my troop. It's wet back up in there, so they're gonna have to haul in a ton of dirt back up in there. So that's gonna push water forward on Goshen. I mean, I'm just saying, like, where's it gonna go? They're talking, he's talking about this is gonna go into these ponds, that they're doing retention ponds. Well, those retention ponds touch my property. It touches my stuff, it touches the Crowders, it touches the, the Whitleys beside me and a couple others. I mean, there's a ton of us that live right there. Um, so whenever you've got that and the buffer, you're dealing with the wetlands, that's a huge consideration. I mean, we were told when this place was sold, it was still sold under Cu- Kuva. So how does it get taken out, out of Kuva, and I may be saying that wrong, from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-five? I thought it was a ten-year plan, but it had to stay in it, so...
You can, that's your fair penalty.
You can, okay. So um, but the big thing is the berm at the back, the traffic today alone. Last time at the planning board, I quoted forty-two trucks rode up and down Goshen Road. The E, E Trucking Company rides up and down it all day long, dump trucks all day long. You've got cars all day long. I counted forty-seven trucks today from the time of eight o'clock this morning till noon. Okay, that's a lot of trucking companies running on Goshen. Not to mention, you've got two-hundred-and-fifty houses, this house, this house, that's a thousand houses coming in. You put four people, that's four thousand cars you're putting on Goshen Road. Four thousand cars in less than a two-mile radius, okay? Um, our road was voted a long time ago in T-Splot to be fixed. It's never been repaid to this day. I've lived there since nineteen ninety, I guess it is. Um, I don't, it's only been paved once since I've lived there. Um, anyway, I'm trying to keep it short on this, but make sure I hit that. But my biggest concern is the drain stuff, like where is the wa- the, the water gonna go? Because I can tell you right now, when it rains, it comes in on both sides of my property, and on the side on this side. So um, the drainage is a huge thing, and also, I mean, this is a lot of people to put in there. And when you add that in there, and you're talking twenty-twenty, um, let's see if I can read my writing, but twenty-twenty-eight, you're talking, um, it's possible to get started, all that. What's gonna happen if it doesn't pass all the EPA stuff, all the wetland stuff? Is it gonna turn into warehouses? Like, I, I'm being like dead serious, like what's gonna go back there if it doesn't, if it doesn't happen?
Look at your future land use map, that warehousing is not permitted in this area.
Okay, well, that's uh... It touches two-hundred acres to the school system, and then you've got a, a roadway right there that'll lead you right to the parkway. So I'm just pointing out the obvious there, like I live there. It is horrible, it's noisy. You can't hear yourself think at night for all the beep-beep-beeping that comes on from McCall Road to Goshen Road to um, down there on twenty-one, from all the warehouses. That's already a huge noise problem. But I'll let some of the others' neighbors speak to this, but drainage is my biggest concern because it's gonna flood my property and it will flood every single person beside me.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think we should do.
Yeah, name's Alan Brande, I live next to her. Um, I wanna add in onto the flooding, they said they don't anticipate it to flood anymore, but the flood, the flood map they're using is seven years old, um, seven, almost ten years old, somewhere in there. So, I mean, they said that at the last meeting. Uh, when we moved in, there was almost no flooding in the back of my property there. There was some, but not a whole lot. The warehouses moved a whole lot of water up to me, moving this, and they're gonna put all their drainage ponds, gonna drain into there, and then drain that into the flood zone back there. There's, there's no way it can't flood, flood us out worse. And then traffic, traffic on twenty-one, it took me two and a half hours to get from Savannah to here tonight. Adding those cars onto our side road, without the main roads being taken care of first, that's just gonna make it more and more miserable. And like she said, the noise and everything, I moved there to be quiet and have a little place somewhere near town. There's so much traffic, like you said, you can't stay outside, there's so much beeping and, and stuff.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question that I don't, I didn't ask earlier, is it, can I?
Let's, who is it directed to?
Uh, the applicant.
Okay, let's reserve it till the end.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
It had pertaining to the drainage, which is why.
I was gonna ask Jonathan if he can add as well.
Yeah, there's been delineation.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Will you state your name, please?
My name's Jimmy Blakey. Are these gonna be rental houses? Or people go own the houses?
We...
Can anybody answer that question?
I can, I, I can add to this, this is R-five. Um, so R-five has a restriction on it, um, um, that uh, only twenty percent of the properties uh, can be rented after, uh, for one year after the CO is issued, so. Um, but the applicant, if he, uh, if he can, if he wants to go farther than that, can answer.
We have no plans for rentals. I mean, these are gonna be individually planted lots, owned by one of its...
Just like this gentleman could rent his house, if he decided to move out, can we control whether an individual rents their house later? No, we cannot, but these are not planned to be mass rentals, multifamily product, anything like that.
So just to clarify, your intent is not to start out as, thank you.
Nowhere is y'all not building a bunch of houses like they do over on the Longleaf, they all rentals?
I don't know anything about that project, but no, these are, these are designed and intend to be for sale.
Are they gonna be brick, brick veneer homes, or there's just gonna be a, that plastic siding on them?
Yeah, I believe there are specific architectural requirements built into the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I don't, sir, I don't believe they've gotten that far along in the process yet.
What worries me is we already got one, uh, one subdivision that's being built now, already permitted to build another subdivision just across the railroad track. Now we're gonna permit this one, that's gonna be three of them crack-a-box subdivisions within half a mile. Are we gonna put a red light there at Goshen Road to take care of some of that traffic? Y'all say y'all widening the Goshen roads, you're only gonna add a turning lane, you're not adding, but you're not adding any more lanes. You need to full lane it. Uh, it, you're just putting too much there gum traffic on that road. And I know you can't foresee long enough ahead to put in the right infrastructure, but seems to me like something needs to be done to slow it down. I mean, why crowd all these subdivisions in there and lower our people's prop- our, my property and the neighbors around there? There you go. So I hope y'all turn this down. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Ma'am?
I'm Eva Curry. I don't really live where this Hi-Ho farm used to be. It backs up to where I am and um, they already destroyed our property by putting the Effingham Parkway through there. And I'll try to walk in the mornings, and when I was on Forest Haven the other day, which is less than a mile long, I was passed by twenty-seven dump trucks in just that little short distance. They're constantly going back and forth across that road being built, and they've taken property from, from my neighbors. And they assured them that the engineers had all of that figured out. Well, when the um, tropical storms came through there, we were waist-deep almost in water for over a week. And they had to, the neighbors had to pump their own property off because they just steadily kept going. They've cut through wetlands over there, and it's, it's just a mess. So if this is gonna take another two or three years, once they get this bypass finished, we're gonna have more dump trucks back and forth and back and forth, building all of this. That we were under the understanding that it would never be a subdivision back there, but... But it, it will flood, trust me, it'll flood because they're gonna cut it just like they did with this road that they're putting through. And, and we were buried in water.
So just to clarify, you come in on Moss Loop and go to the Agri Railroad Cross?
I, I live on Squirrel Run, which is, that um, railroad track is my backyard.
On the other side, got you.
Is it in my backyard?
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, anyone else wish to speak? Yes.
As they build the parkway, how does that drainage infrastructure, I mean, is that, like, we're doing Blue Jays expansion, the last part we're doing is the, the ditching and all that, how does that work with the parkway?
That's what, I was, I was gonna reserve the question for Jonathan at the very end, um, with a few there, so.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Carol Brown. I'm, I've got my notes here, but I'm probably gonna skip over some of it because y'all have already heard a good bit of it.
Thank you.
But I wanted to point out that uh, we count on the Board of Commissioners to balance growth and progress with keeping our county rural, with the open areas that many of us choose to live in. We count on you to make sure that rezoning of property, all infrastructure is in place to accommodate the extra housing and people without having ill effects on the surrounding community. We need to keep our particularly high-quality education system to be an education system that we want to have our children in. We need to be able to comfortably drive across the county without battling traffic. We are a rural community, and most of us wanna keep it that way. I've even talked to quite a few people who live in these crowded subdivisions who like the fact that they're in a rural county, even if their houses aren't. Currently, there are about three thousand new high-density residences approved to be started in the next couple of years, plus the thousand or so that are currently being built right now. Those numbers reflect only the high-density with sixty-six hundred square foot lots. Those numbers I just gave you, those are not the, they are twos or R-ones. These num- oh, I already said that. Uh, there are about twenty-five neighborhoods zoned R-five containing four thousand residences that are in the building stage are approved to start. More than half of these are in the South Effingham High School District. Four members of the planning board agreed that this project could overload existing or proposed public facilities. The changes to Goshen Road should help with the current traffic, but probably some of the, and probably some of the increase from Longleaf Village, Grace Community Church, and the Waterford Apartments, which are just getting started near Learning Treehouse. But will it also be able to handle all the extra cars from the new high-density subdivision on Earl Lane Road? Those guys are gonna have to use Goshen if they go to Rincon. Well, not have to, but if they don't wanna drive around the world, right? In addition to that, will it handle the hundreds of extra cars that are, will be coming in and out of Hi-Ho Hills? That's a lot of extra traffic on a two-lane road, even with added turning lanes. All members of the planning board agree that adding tho- these three-hundred-and-seventy-seven households will lead to congestion, noise, and traffic hazards. How will our excellent school systems in South Effingham County absorb all these extra children? They may be able to handle a few more, but will they be able to maintain their level of excellence with almost seven hundred extra households in Longleaf Village, Grace Community Church, Wat- and Waterford Apartments, and Earl Lane Road? More than a thousand new households on Highway thirty. Seven hundred or fi- seven hundred and fifty or so new residences at Timberlake, New Haven, and Blue Jay Apartments. That is about twenty-five hundred more households that are being added to the schools in South Effingham. Should we really add another three-hundred-and-seventy-seven? I have grandchildren in South Effingham Elementary right now who will soon be attending South Effingham Middle Schools and South Effingham High Schools. Will they get the same quality of education that their parents received in that school? There are some of us, some who think that this property has no economic value other than to plop down this big, high-density neighborhood in the middle of a loo... Low-density? Uh, you know what I mean. There, there are other economic uses. It's just if you wanna get this great big boom, here, you bunch of money all at one time. It's only, that's the only reason to do it this way. And what will be the fi- economic value of that property after it's subdivided and there's a bunch of little tiny houses on tiny lots? Uh, let's see, where are we here? You guys already know all the other things they could do with Hi-Ho Hills, there's...
Thank you, ma'am.
That would benefit the community. I mean, you know, if we turned, if we had a big forum there or something, it's gotta be something other than that.
Thank you, ma'am, that, that timer, I'm trying to get everybody adequate time to speak. Thank you for your well put-together thoughts.
Betting my grift, though.
And don't worry about messing up, I've done it quite a few times tonight, so.
Okay, there's a lot, a lot of numbers going up right now, and three-hundred-and-seventy-seven more doesn't seem...
Thank you, ma'am. Come forward if you would, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, sure, sure.
Do you have a microphone and I'll take it back?
Yeah, it's right there.
I can take it back to, okay.
I'm sorry, I can't see you from behind the podium there, so.
Here you go, Barbara.
Here she comes.
Just run them over.
Uh, my name is Barbara Crowder, you've heard that name before already.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I live among these people, and yes, we've all been for the same reason. But one of the things I wanted to say in answer to this gentleman's an- question about uh, who will be owning the houses, just today, I heard that a house that's one, two, three, four, five houses from me is advertising per room to rent. It's a small house, fifteen hundred and something dollars for the master, and twelve hundred and something for the other, to li- for, to li- for people to live one person in a room in a house that's... And so I just wonder what we have in our system to prevent this? Is this... Is this legal? I'm sorry. No, no, no answer?
You agree.
I mean, this was, it's at, it's on...
It's at eight forty-five Goshen Road, and it's thirty-nine hundred dollars a month, fourteen hundred...
We can, let, let's, let's get what's relevant, yeah, I understand where you're going with that, relevancy as far as containing.
We need to have something in people to know, because I don't want, I don't want that.
Yes, ma'am. This gentleman right here to your immediate left will be able to uh, advise you on that.
Okay.
And, and I understand where you were going with that, so.
And I can tell you right now that my property is high to, according to some, but you walk around it and it's muddy now, from just what little bit we've had today in the, in the yard, actual yard.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we are a little over a lot of time, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow you time, so if you could, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, my name is Chris Barber, and I have a property that actually backs up to the Blackwater Creek that uh, was mentioned earlier. And my biggest concern is, is really with the flooding and the wetlands, all the damage that's gonna be coming into that. I have seen my backyard absolutely fill up at the, at the smallest rainstorm. So with all the unknowns that they have, they have a lot of stuff that they don't know. They haven't planned it, they haven't calculated what it's gonna be, it's not the right time for them to do this. They're, they don't know, they don't have the answers yet, and I'm concerned about that. And uh, until they can really give me some firm answers and, and... And until they can really give me some firm answers and, and tell me what is actually going to be happening, I don't think that we should move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jonathan, you mind coming up real quick? I believe we had a couple of questions for you. Mr. Floyd?
No, I was just curious about the, you know, the concern with the flooding. If back in the hurricane, there wasn't, there was flooding since the Parkway's been going in. At what stage is, is the, I guess, the drainage infrastructure for the Parkway? Is that part of the last? Is that on the front? Is that built?
It's typically built in the beginning, but I will say there is known drainage infrastructure issues that I know Commissioner Burdette, you're well aware of that we've had with Effingham Parkway, but the latest conversation with GDOT is still September 2025 for this portion of Effingham to be complete. So, yeah, by the time, if, if they were to get approved, you know, all the drainage improvements in regards to Effingham Parkway will be in.
Enough, this has been delineated, actually delineated?
Have the wetlands been delineated?
No.
They have not. I'm sure that's something that they'll go through, but if not, they are required to maintain a 50-foot buffer from the wetland, the National Wetlands Inventory.
My understanding, you had to have them delineated before it was brought to the board?
Yes, so when, if this zoning were to be approved, they would have to come back before you with their preliminary plat, and at that stage, they would have to do their wetlands delineation and of course their hydrology.
Very good. Thank you. I'm going to take a moment and go ahead and close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before you begin your questions, I'd just like to note for the record that we, I did receive two emails. Mr. Barber just spoke from himself and Trevina Barber. We have emails of record.
Very good, thank you. Thanks, Stephen.
I have a question.
Ma'am, we've, we've closed the hearing, just, one moment. If I give you one, then I have to give everybody one. But briefly, briefly, go right ahead.
If you approve the rezoning to R1 today, R5, whatever it is, and they never are able to present a plat that's acceptable, and then they finally say, no, we can't spend the money to do what you want us to do, what happens to the property once it's rezoned, but there's no plan to put something there?
Right. That's a great question, and that's something that has been discussed amongst us and we have to get with our legal on to. Are you able to set, you know, timeframes on a rezoning of a property and have it revert back should it not be developed within a certain timeframe? And that's a discussion that's, you know, is internal, and I have nothing to report on that for you, but it is in talks, just to let you know. Very good. Mr. Kiefer, any input?
I don't, I'm curious for some, some of y'all's questions.
Ms. Beth, I know you don't have anything to say.
No, I don't have anything to say. About 30 minutes worth. Do I have a timer or not? I've lived in this county all my life, and I was involved in the education system and so forth, and I've always heard what draws people, that everybody wants tourists. What, what draws people to you? Well, there's two things that always said, schools first, because people, everybody, you want a kid to be in a safe place, Dr. Fort said, learning environment, but also where they're going to learn. You know, you don't want to be where you hear about these systems that a third of the fifth graders can read and the other two-thirds can't. So, and, and rural. You know, just like you, you said, even people that move here and live in these types of subdivisions are glad they're rural. But we're not, but we're not rural anymore in, in terms of when we allow these types of subdivisions. And, and I was looking through and thinking of the different things as I was looking at this the, the last few days. If, if, if this is our ticket to get people to Effingham and we keep allowing these types of subdivisions, then we're shooting our own selves in the foot. Because Dr. Fort gave us a whole bunch of numbers today, but the fact is with all those numbers that you so very adequately stated about what's going on, if, if we've got, just to break it down, if, if we say we've got like 50, I think I've got 5,400 plus that's already been approved for the county, that's not counting what Springfield's doing, Rincon's doing, and Guyton's doing. Okay? And if you go to any of their meetings, they're building too. Okay? So, so you've got this, and, and you're talking apartments as well as, and townhomes, particularly in the city areas. Just like you said, you've already got this on there with, with the Goshen, you've already got two subdivisions, large ones, and of course others in surrounding area. The, the traffic is definitely an issue, and these are all things we've all talked about. But what I'm concerned with this particularly is, is this is, this is a, this is a high-density in an area. Goshen Road was one of the prettiest roads, you know, you had trees, you had gobs, you had big lots, you had people on, and now, like you say, it's all changing. You're like you're in downtown Port Whitworth or something at some times. But, but I'm concerned, there's too much I-don't-knows with this, in my opinion. You, 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 you don't, you know, you, you don't, you're not sure about the houses, you're not sure about the amenities, you're not sure, you know, yeah, we shouldn't have any flooding, but we've heard from a whole bunch of people that you're going to have flooding. And it makes sense, when, when you, you concrete something, which is essentially what you're doing, or asphalt, that water can't go in the ground there, so it's got to go somewhere. But, but the biggest thing to me too is this, no second entrance for all these people. I mean, to me, that is a safety issue, because if something happens and people have to get out, they only got one way out, and if that gets blocked, what are you going to do? We, we have, we have Shadowbrook on Log Landing Road. There's only one way out and in, and it's sort of down in the little gully when you go in. If that was, none of those people will get out, you're going to have sheer panic. Now, maybe you can send the deputies in or the fire in or the EMS in through that secondary road, but then you've got a whole bunch of people that's scared to death about what's going on. So I, I just, I, I can't see how we can, we can do this. It's too much. You're going to overcrowd, as someone said, the school systems in this area, and, you know, you just, you, you're going to raise the taxes because the money's got to come from somewhere. So, this, it's, it's just too much in that area, and it is killing the goose that laid the golden egg, because you're going to have an overcrowded school system, you're not going to get the education that you had in the past, because sure, you can put 35 kids in a classroom, but if you've ever dealt with 35 kids in a classroom, you know that's not the best learning environment. So, y'all probably, y'all was going to vote no anyway, because everything I said, of everything, I'm saying everything I said, I'm saying everything I said in the last meeting. So, but it's, it's just, I actually increased my no vote after I kept hearing, we're not sure, we're not sure, and of course, what you people said too, but it's, it's, it's too much I'm not sure. I'll quit before my 30 minutes are up.
Thank you for the forecast.
Beth, I'm going to surprise you.
Oh, you're kidding?
I somewhat agree with you with this one. The, what's the difference about this, different, this one than we just, the one we approved over my district, is we had minimum square footage on the homes, we had a mixture of lot sizes. There were some larger lots for larger loans to get the, I mean, homes to get the price point and the values up. So it didn't all, as Mr. Blakey said, crackerbox houses, you know? We want larger homes. So I think minimum square footage, all street parking. I know you're hindered because you don't have a builder already, but that's something that's got to be incorporated with that many homes. There's going to be, as far as a safety issue, people will be parking out in the road. And even though it says it meets the green space, I just don't see what I would think is needed for the amenities there. I think it's a good piece of land, and I think it could be done, but I think we're just going to have to see more details, more like what we just approved at the last meeting.
I, I have the, probably my strongest concern right now is the timing with Goshen Road I just, you can't handle it today, and I know we're, I know we're working on it, but I don't know, you know, just timing-wise of getting there.
If this was another area possibly, but I talked to Roger earlier today, and until we get some of this infrastructure done on that, in that specific area, it's going to be hard to...
But, but I do want to add, and, and I'm not changing, just to talk, what you mentioned, what I'm kind of can, the way I sit, look at things is, people are going to have to live somewhere, they're our children, they're, we're graduating 800 to 1,000 a year. Are they not able to come back to Effingham and live if they leave? You know, and, and that is a concern. I want to make sure our children can come live here, so, so it's something we've got to consider.
And that they can afford it. The boys that graduated this year cannot afford to come back to...
Listen, that's the whole ball of wax. That's the whole, that's the whole ball of wax.
That's the whole problem with not having homes.
Again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not speaking, you know, for this project, but it is a concern of mine, I want to...
Let's, let's keep all discussion up, up here at the board, please. Thank you.
But, so I just want to, going forward, I, it's a big concern of mine, because I think, I think our children deserve the ability to come live back where they grew up.
Yeah, but you've got 40, 5,400 already getting ready to...
Well, I know, I know, I know, and, and...
That's part of it, too.
It is, it is.
You know, I, I think there, there is going to be places to live.
Thank you. Commissioner Burdette?
You know, I do want to address a few of the things that was, was mentioned, and it's, it's always balance is what we're looking for. You know, just like, you know, you spoke about them renting rooms out for enormous prices, it's because we don't have enough housing. And we don't have enough housing over some things we can't control, the builders aren't building what we have approved. So, you know, like Earl Lane and some of these other ones, we're hoping we can get some housing so it can drive some prices down, there is some availability. I think the sales of homes have dropped a little bit here lately, I see more on, on the market, but, you know, we do need more housing. But on the other hand, we have a lot coming. Earl Lane, one reason I was behind the, the second part of that is we're getting a new road, we're getting a new place to travel, so that developer has to put a road in there, has to pay that, and the county's only responsible for a tiny spot. So it was a big win for us as far as getting, you know, our school traffic backwards and forwards there. So, I mean, to look, but fast forward to this, I mean, and address some of the flooding too. Guys, we had a major, some major events. I didn't even have a backyard last year, last, during these floods and the weather. Everybody had that everywhere. Wetlands are not our responsibility.
No, it's gotten worse over the last...
I know it has, but we got, I mean, we really got hammered. I didn't, I didn't even have a, my backyard was completely immersed, and I've never had that before. So we've had some big stuff, you know, but wetlands is not something we handle locally, it's a state-level type thing. So they have to do some things engineering-wise that's above our pay grade with that. I'll say that and just leave it at that. As far as this one, it's, it's really an infantile stage of a development, guys. It's, it's way too many for, for, for me right now. I think in our district, we've got about 2,000 approved. I wish we had more control, is what we're talking about, as far as when they build, so we could get some stuff built and not just be waiting on it, because it makes it so hard to plan. We're trying to plan infrastructure, we're trying to plan for schools, we're trying to plan, so we do have homes for our children to come back to, and some stuff's getting built, some stuff's not, and it's really almost impossible to plan. But, and we've done some stuff in the past and tied it to infrastructure improvements. But today, we have so much going on, it's, I, I don't even want to do that. We've got moratorium on this area, and that's, there's a reason behind that. We've got some great things coming from that moratorium, new standards, new density requirements, new buffers that's not going to apply to this. So, that and a lot of other reasons that we heard, we know minimum square, there's not enough here to even go on. So I mean, for today, I cannot get behind this, so I would just make a motion to deny.
I want to make a few statements first, if I could, prior to calling for a motion. You know, the property is, is unique. It has a very, you know, what I like about the property, I'll go with what I like about it first, is that it's, it's off the path, so it's out of sight, out of mind, which is a lot of what we hear complaints about seeing in people's backyards, you know, all of this high-density that we're doing. The disadvantage that I see of the property is it's surrounded by wetlands and railroad tracks. So in other words, you know, in, in my simple mind of thinking, you have an elevated railroad track, an elevated railroad track, wetlands, and its surrounding, you're, you're creating impermeable surface. You've already got impermeable surface that has been cleared off of the warehouses over there. Without knowing how it flows, I would have to think of it affected in some form or fashion. Beyond that, the density, the density is, is a concern. As stated, we're not ready on the infrastructure on that side yet as far as roads, our traffic, you know, we, we have a lot of things that we, we need to, to take care of. As I've said to, to some of our commissioners, we don't have an inventory problem at this time, we have a building problem at this time with 5,300 plus in reserves. We, we have a sustainable, and I believe the turnover rate around 500 a year is, is what has been the average, if I'm not mistaken. So we have quite an inventory to keep up. Is it enough to bring the housing market down? Who's to say? You know, things are only worth what you're willing to pay for them, right? So that, that, that's that. But beyond that, just thinking county-wide, this county, the reason that I believe the moratorium's in place, and I'm speaking solely for myself, is that the ordinances that were written before were to bring in growth, to, to develop the county. Now we see we've had an influx and it's time to, to, you know, pump the brakes a little bit and really rethink of how we're doing things, because we see some of the projects that are here that, you know, aren't the most favorable, and you don't want to continue to, to make those mistakes over and over again. But beyond that, we have an asset here in this county. This, this county is, is a beautiful place, people moved here for a reason, and that is something that, that I personally would like to try to continue to protect the identity. I believe there are ways to grow but still maintain identity, and those are things that we're trying to reflect in the ordinances that you should see here in the near future. Beyond that, that's about all I have for it. And I, I, you know, I don't have a vote, but I, I, I think this is a little too much, a little too soon presently. With that, if there's any further discussion? If not, I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion to deny.
I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry I didn't catch that.
Roger, Roger made one.
Yeah, I made it earlier.
Okay, previous, I'm, I'm sorry I interrupted that. All right, let's try this again. We're going to reset right here. I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion to deny.
A second.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion failed. No use for number 16, correct? Item number 14, I'd be in the motion failed previously in 15, no, no need. I'm going to give us just a minute to, to handle it.
Can I ask one question? You indicated that the moratorium did not apply to this one. Now that it's been denied, if they come back, will it apply if they refile?
I'll answer this question for you. Anything that has not received final plat, is that correct, Steve?
Since they were denied, they have six months to reply, and they have to follow the rules, so they are going to be under the moratorium.
And does, and that should apply to any development that has been approved that has not submitted their final plat plans? So anything that's existing...
This, this brings up an interesting question.
Right.
Does the six-months waiting period now begin when the moratorium is lifted?
No, no, I, I, I would think the six-month waiting period begins tonight.
That's what I...
But to your point is, has everyone that's submitted given us a plat?
That's a good question.
Sure. Steve, can you clarify?
All right, so ask that question again, please.
The existing, what, what, at what point is the cutoff for when the new ordinances are instituted versus...
Sorry.
The old grandfather, when would they be grandfathered in and when would they not?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, this is the last subdivision that was submitted before the moratorium went into effect. Is that correct?
Next, April 1st, we'll see the last one.
Yeah, April 1st, we'll see the last one.
Now, let's talk about things that have been approved.
Okay, let's talk about things.
If things have been approved, at what point is the cutoff for them to be grandfathered into the old versus... If things have been approved, at what point is the cutoff for them to be grandfathered into the old versus the new?
Okay, so you're saying that if if the moratorium.
Say we release.
The zoning districts are released and you got new, um, how is that gonna work, Mr. Attorney, please, sir?
I would need time to look at that, that's a, that's a really big question, um, it's not gonna be answered tonight.
Very good, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We'll research that and let you.
Thank you.
I had a question at the planning board, it had nothing to do with this going on tonight, but this has been going on for a long time, but they brought this before the planning board. And when they first brought it before the planning board, mama had fell and broke her back, so I know that's July of this past year. Well, I know that whenever I messaged and said, hey, my mom broke her back, can I please make sure we have a handicapped seating, cuz I emailed. And I got an answer back from Kimberly, um, and uh also emailed for my neighbor Barbara Crowder, because she had fell, broke her arm, and had a bad knee injury. So I'm like, I'm bringing two people in here, I need help getting them in the building, like, is there anybody to assist kinda thing? Um, they had, the 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 builders had actually taken this off the planning. Now, that's not the first time, it wasn't the second time, how many times are they allowed to take it off of the planning board before they have to completely resubmit it? And how much money comes from my tax dollars and everybody's in this room, every time they re, they come in and take it off the planning board, put it on the planning board. And then, hey, y'all have to send out the letters to all the people who touch properties kinda thing, um, all that's time and and money's like evolved in that, like, what what is the deal? Because that particular piece of land came off of the planning board by the builders, by those people, um, at least three times. It wasn't passed because of the planning committee, it was passed because they took it off. And I asked that question, I've asked it several times, and I have not gotten an answer since November of last year.
The answer is right behind you in the blue jacket.
Which, blue stripe?
Blue stripes, sorry.
Only do it once.
So, unlike the commissioners, um, where you have one that you can postpone, and the applicant has one they could postpone, and that is a policy that is written. Planning board does not have that same policy. However, thanks to your suggestions, uh, we have submitted some writing um to the attorney this week. He is reviewing it now, if it meets all the statutory requirements, we will implement something at the planning board. For postponements both by the applicant and as well as by um staff or the planning board members.
And that could be permitted times or reconstituted fees.
Yes, it could be, it could be both, yeah, whatever we decide to come up with.
Very good, thank you, thank you. Alright.
Yeah, notice the case, it it's a lot of time and money for us to take off working.
I I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need to move along, these are things we'll take up with staff, and I assure you, I will get them taken care of for you. Moving on to item number seventeen, uh, consideration to approve the first reading to amend section four dot one A. Table of permitted uses of the Effingham County Code of Ordinances to allow for a daycare as permitted right in. R one, R two, R three, and a conditional use in R four and R five. A hair salon has a permitted use in L I and allow recycling operations as conditional use in B three. Steve?
Okay, um, so the clerk suggested that we include all these in in this public hearing. So these are all amendments to the table of permitted uses, but they all came from the public. As suggestions of what they wanted to do, and so we have a new process in place, we've had for a little while. It is um where the general public can make an application online in OpenGov to do a text amendment. There are currently no fee for this process, but it relieves staff of having to come before you and ask for text amendment, and the general public doing it on their behalf. Okay, so this is, this is what you see here, so there are actually um, um, two. Daycare proposals that are before you, and daycare being a regular seven kids or under, it's not the over one that the state regulates. These are the in-home daycares, and then the hair salon and the light industrial and recycling operation, the conditional use, so there's actually three here. But we broke up the daycare because of the intensity of the use in the different zones. Um, and then, if this is, are you with me? Cuz you don't.
I'm sitting here reading this.
Okay, alright, hold on a second now, so if you approve these amendments to the table of permitted uses, okay. It's not just the applicant, it's gonna be everybody else that comes before them that can use these same criteria, okay? So, if somebody else wants to do a hair salon and a light industrial where some of these, uh, they're not all big warehouses, some of them are smaller little places like that. Then they could use one of those buildings to put a hair salon in, so it's not just the applicants tonight, it's everybody that comes after them, so I wanted to give you a heads up too, okay? Um, go ahead.
I see this muddy in the water.
Yeah, hold on, I was gonna ask. I know you haven't finished yet.
No, no, go ahead, ask me a question.
Uh, what is the why behind this?
The why, because uh that's what these people wanna do.
Okay, these people being?
The, I'm sure all the, or some of the applicants are out here um that want these text amendments, but I'm trying to explain to you how that process went about.
Right, um, you know, just, I mean, this is not applicable really to childcare as much, but any home business, how, I mean, I feel like we have a hard time. Enforcing, how how are we enforcing all of these things that we're allowing within communities?
Because currently, a daycare is not allowed in an R one, R two, or R three, and they're not allowed in R four and R five, so they're not allowed anywhere. Except for the Bs, so they're allowed to be one B, two B, three, so if you see what.
Business district.
And they're allowed in AR one, AR two as a conditional use or something like that.
Only in AR one.
Yeah, only in AR one, so they're not allowed in AR two, they won't be allowed in the new AR three when you see that. And they're not allowed in R one, R two, or R three, and they're not allowed in R four or R five.
Well, with R five, I mean, we already haven't, asking the developers to put in additional parking, how, I don't see how in the world we can expect.
Now, remember, it's seven or under, you can only have seven or under kids, that's it, everything after that is state regulated, that would not be allowed in these zones.
Okay, and is there any requirements as far as the home for these, or is there anything from the county side at all?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no, and we don't have extra conditions based on just because it's a daycare.
Right.
Um, they would just have to hold a county business license.
Yep. I I I don't even think they get inspected.
You know, I understand the need for childcare and how expensive it is and all that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my concern is is just personally, um, speaking of this is, um, you know, personally, alright, we'll say eight. You know, maybe I'll take on ten now, and then, you know, where does it stop ultimately?
Oh, sure.
Well, just like the recycling will be three, you know, I'd recycle, could be stacking tires to whatever, and I don't want that business.
So.
I think I would rather have that person come before me personally.
They are.
Additional use.
Or conditional use.
So you can look at all the, all the parameters.
Right, now, remember, the reason why we're doing this is right now it's not allowed. So to adjust the table of permitted uses, this is what has to go through, then they come before you for the conditional use, if you allow that in a B three.
Got you.
This is something we direct, this is something.
So right now, they're not permitted anyway.
Right, he's looking to add this.
No, I think it's, I'm I'm.
I think it's a great idea.
Conditional use where they come before us, so we can look at all the facts.
So what we're looking at, so right now, recycling operations are not allowed in a B three.
There's a reason for that.
Yeah.
And there may be a reason for that prior to my existence, yeah.
Definitely not be in favor of that.
But, so, and we're saying that the applicant who was here would like to do recycling operations, a conditional use in a B three. And then I wanna give you the definition of what recycling operation says in the ordinance.
So, let me pull that up.
It's it's not exactly everything that you've been told in the past.
So it, so recyclable material means materials designated by the Board of Commissioners as recyclable. And which, but for their use, reuse, or recycling potential would be waste. So, that is, that is our current order.
Isn't that a great definition?
Very broad definition.
It is very broad definition.
Just about anything you want.
Junk cars.
It could be bailed aluminum, it's, you're talking about a heavy, heavy industrial use.
Right, so I will, I will let the recycling folks come up here and speak to this, since they're the ones that made the application.
And I get it, it's hard to find industrial land.
I feel like I'm about to get attacked.
I didn't know it was one of those things.
Hi, uh, my name's Michael Jarrow, um, owner of Savannah Iron and Metal, was formerly Jarrow's Recycling, been a family business for forty-five years. Uh, uh, looking to relocate to um, uh, the old east of Eden off of Bloomingdale Road there, um, that's right at twelve acres, I believe. Uh, we actually looked at into uh rezoning it originally, I haven't purchased the property yet because of this reason. Uh, we looked into rezoning it uh originally uh to I O, but um, uh, there is no, um, I don't think there's even any zoning that allows recycling anymore in Effingham. So we was, that's why we're here to, this is what we was told to do, um, and um, alright, so now I'm open for questions, so.
Heavy industrial allows for recycling.
Light, uh, the the industrial did not.
Heavy doesn't?
The the moon, um, memorial.
We don't have anything that offers recycling?
No, on the current table of permitted uses, uh, recycling is not on there.
That's gonna be heavy industrial, not bend to these recycling.
Yeah, me too, we haul for them, and it's, 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 you know, it's eighteen wheelers, I don't, nothing against your business, man, I don't even put my trucks in there cuz they get flat tires.
Yes, sir.
Cuz it's such a harsh environment.
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I would prefer maybe doing a lot industrial. And then looking at it as a conditional in that, and then putting it, and then heavily conditioned when you do that, you know. If it ever changed from what you're intended use to something else, revert it back. If you'd be doing a B three, I think you were gonna start setting some targets in a lot of different places. And this is what happened with the trucking, you know, we said, okay, let's do conditional in B three, and then we started getting applications after applications for conditionals in B threes. Just because we opened that door.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I mean, I I wouldn't have a problem helping you getting in the right spot and and getting something for you, but it would, for me, it is, like you said, it's it's heavy industrial stuff, it's.
Yes, sir.
It can be a big deal.
Yeah, we um, um, we work with the communities, we divert about thirty-six thousand tons of material from uh, uh, landfills a year. Um, we we don't, we do card, we were Pratt Recycling in Savannah, which handles all the recycling material in the area, we um, we work with uh, uh, Chatham County. Uh, Board of Education, I mean, uh, we're with um, um, uh, we're a legit rec- recycling company that that offers uh many avenues, uh, even electronic recycling and stuff like that, so we um, um, you know.
We've got tires sitting around.
Yeah, yeah, we are, um, as.
There is definitely a spot for it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, the right space for you is is there, I've seen your operation, I used to have an office off of Till February.
Yes, sir.
Watch the big claw come down and grab it.
Yeah, yes, sir.
So, yeah, I mean, it is, it is loud, um, and so we need to find a spot, I believe, that would would fit that, and I believe a conditional use personally. In our uh industrial would be where this would go.
Oh, I would, I said, well, the one thing about the the location is good is, there's one house, you know, well away from the property, the property owners know them, they're well aware of everything, they're perfectly fine. They lived next to a salvage yard east of Eden for sixty years, however long the salvage yard was there, um, and there is nowhere around, uh, there's, there's no residential around there, no houses around the area. The only thing is across the street is S R M, uh, the uh, the concrete company, so as far as noise, that type of deal, you.
You're already in among friends.
You don't, yeah, you don't want to worry about that.
And and I see that, you know, you you may be unique, but.
Yes, sir.
What about the other spot, you know, so.
The next guy, cuz once you start something.
That's why I said, something reverts back.
Yeah, I understand, yes, sir.
Every, every recycler, state will be like, hey, they're allowing this here.
I was hoping my my case would be an individualized, I didn't know it was gonna be wrapped up in with everybody, so, you know, when I heard that, I was like, oh.
And that's the only thing I'm afraid of, I want you to be successful and do your business, I just don't wanna open the door for a flood of applications.
No, I think there's a place for every business in the county.
Yes, sir.
I don't think B three is it though.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
That's more, B, uh, B, B to me is is, that's a business, that's some kind of storefront of some sorts.
Yes, sir.
It it can get a little deeper than just a retail place, it could be uh, uh lumber store with a with a storefront, you know. But someplace people go to buy stuff.
Yes, sir.
And then when you get into industrial, it's more this type of industrial application.
But I do think we need to find somewhere in the ordinance, they, you need an avenue.
Yeah.
To, you know, for your business, whatever that is, and we need to fix that.
I I do have a question, is uh, if if, uh, if we could get the property rezoned to I O, would that location be acceptable?
Yeah.
I'd have to look at it.
It would not be acceptable.
No.
Is that in your district?
Yeah, I don't think so, highway areas, we've looked at it as a commercial area, right? Industrial.
Correct, I mean, it it it, so, but even if it was rezoned as um industrial, it's still not at approved use, we still have to amend. We still have to amend the ta, the table of permitted uses, you know, the difference being we'd make recycling operations as a conditional use in industrial. So, I mean, we we still have to do that change, now whether or not the board um actually wants industrial, any additional industrial on eighty, um, that's in, that's entirely up to you, up to you all.
Yeah, cuz we've done a commercial.
We can talk about this later, but that's. I don't know, I'll put it that way, I think that's my district, I'd be happy to talk to you.
I know they're going for, they're going for laying it, right, I mean, it's in the process of being for length, yeah.
They talk. I'm kind of, uh, when I see it, it's there, I'll put it that way.
It was a junkyard before.
Yeah.
And we wanted it, we gotta clean it up.
Yes, sir.
That piece with the fencing where they wanted.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got many of pork in there.
Yeah, I've been there for a long time, yes, sir.
Me talking to you, the more, the more things you come that protect the environment, protect the people around you, protect the traffic patterns, that, you know, is a plan to bring to 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 Mr. Floyd.
Okay.
He's he's been great working with people.
Okay, alright, good. Alright, that it, think further, alright, thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable on the the daycares on, as a conditional use, is that something we can move forward to?
Yeah, I would, I would comment on that, and that would speak to all the shortages we have of daycares.
And and you can, I mean, you just simply amend the, um, you you amend the approval to remove a particular item. I will say that the daycares are permitted use in R three, um, and um, uh, and even maybe R two, um, R three is multifamily. Yeah, that's, it's it's not the best. And so, I, if anything, I would probably make them conditional uses for for all Rs.
That's what I.
Even R five?
That was gonna be my suggestion as well.
Well, you you can have a big, I mean, there's nothing saying you can't have a big lot or a big house in R five, but if you make a conditional use. And you go there and it's like, no, you, you know, you can't fit it there, then you all can make that decision based on the actual.
I see.
Uh, circumstances of the applicant.
Always be conditional, okay.
As long as it's conditional.
We can see, look at the facts.
Yeah.
And as much as Steve has a has a task, task you early on to try to streamline operations, um, unfortunately, this one here's a, I think it needs review personally.
Okay, sure.
I just, I have a question, if if we do put them in all the Rs, the daycare, and I agree, that's something that's needed, no question. But since it's seven and down, that that would be our responsibility to make sure it was run properly, or I mean, that there was no abuse of whatever, who's who's, who's gonna monitor that?
It's it's not regulated from seven or less, it is not regulated like it is at the state.
Just like any other home business, like, yeah, there's nobody, nobody.
It would have to be, I'm assuming, a.
But it's children.
Code violation for parking on the street, anything.
A code violation would be parking, uh, too many kids, um.
Who's gonna, who's?
That leads to my enforcement question.
It it's gonna be complaints, it's gonna be complaints.
Oh, it's us, it's us, if it's if it's a conditional use.
Originate as a complaint.
Yeah, let's, let's, can we just table this?
Hey, Jonathan Home County Engineer for Effingham, um, we do have a um parking requirement ordinance, um, that's already in place. Um, I would, I would, there's, although daycare is not explicitly listed out, I would throw it underneath, using my best judgment, under the churches, temples, places of worship, funeral homes, schools, public buildings, theaters. The parking requirement is um for that category is one for each uh four seats. And that's what I would, I would say we would use to regulate, so I think during the, you know, the the business license, I think you would ask. How many, you know, children are you, you know, planning on having, and then at that point.
There would be seven below, right?
That's right, the parking requirement would come up, um, and that would have to be, you know, figured out at that time, it would be my recommendation to the board.
But it would only be seven, no more than sevens, that you're talking about, maybe two places, but yeah, but either way.
And then what are ADA requirements and all that?
Yeah.
So what would you like to bring back? If, if at all.
Yeah, I think, I think this does need to go to a work session to discuss, um, so we can really hammer it down in in, instead of legislating it tonight, um.
I agree, I moved the table, can we move the table, or till we got, have the work session, or move it to a work session?
You can just remove it, it. Just remove it, and then we can have a work session and put it on the agenda.
Yeah, and do, uh, Stephanie, do you know if we intend to have a work session before our next meeting?
Um, we do have one on the eighteenth.
Okay.
But we have Ms. Sarah, and I think she's pretty much gonna need the hour.
Very good.
So we would have to push it out until the, until the twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Of April.
Of April.
A month.
In a month from now?
Will that be okay?
Is that okay with everybody?
Because, because the only, the only person that really came to you was the gentleman we just heard.
Um, the, um, there was a, another applicant for the hair salon for the permitted use in industrial. And I will say for that one, um, that hair salon, um, was already an operating hair salon, um, that she, uh, leases. And so, um, that was why that one did come up, so.
Very good.
But yes, there was an applicant for the daycare and then we just finished the task.
Okay.
It's okay. We'll, we'll do it.
Actually, April fifteenth.
But you know, a lower use in a light industrial, I wouldn't see an issue really, you know, if they wanna put a daycare in there.
Yeah.
This was a hair salon.
Well, hair salon, well, what did I say? That's what I meant. That's what I meant. I meant, I meant a hair salon.
With that, um, uh, April fifteenth would be our next available meeting for a work session, correct? Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, move it to the April fifteenth work session and remove from the, um, agenda.
Just to remove it from the.
I make a motion to remove this item from the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Fifteen, uh, let's, let's take a little list because he's got to travel tonight. So if we can reconvene here about, six or seven, whatever. Okay, we'll call it ten minutes. We're gonna take a ten minute break. Alright everyone, I'd ask everyone to start returning to your seats, please.
Yeah, Matt, he's dead. Wasn't him. Matt, okay. That makes more sense. No, it's his daddy, so, yeah.
Alright, everybody. I'm gonna call us back to order here. Uh, we are picking up on new business, item number five. Sorry, number four. That was a test. I'll see if y'all are paying attention. Thank you. Item number four, consideration to approve and publish a revised policy for section five dot zero one, holidays and its skewed absences. Section E, premium holiday pay for essential personnel for the human resources standard of practice. Sarah?
Hi, good evening. Sarah Malsoff, Director of Human Resources Risk Management. So, pretty straightforward. I know we've all been here a long time. As you guys can see, the top five holidays here, um, this came from a couple discussions with our first responders, um, EMS, fire. I've kinda had talks with them. I know Chief Hodges is here tonight, um, so if you guys have any questions, me or him could answer. But it's pretty straightforward and laid out, all right there for you.
Sarah, is this gonna be like mainly for emergency personnel? Because it's not really spelled out in there. It's my only concern that I saw.
Yeah.
If they work.
Well, it is. It's, it's first responders, uh, law enforcement or anybody who's required. Yes, sir.
Maybe I missed that part. I'm sorry.
I believe it defines the essential.
Yeah, as long as it defines it as such.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and it's, it's bold. Yeah, and it's bold in the policy draft, yes, sir.
I missed that earlier.
It's okay. There's a lot of words, you know.
It's those words that get me.
We get a table of permitted uses on this place. Very good. Any questions from the board?
Personally, I think any holiday they should get premium pay. They're working.
Yeah, I agree.
If you did at the power company.
You've got double time and a half?
Yeah.
I agree with that. You know, is there any reason that non-essential workers would have to come in? And do we have a policy that would cover them for premium pay? Should that need arise that is not covered under this right here?
So, currently, we don't have like a premium differential, no, sir. But sometimes, like if maintenance, so like at the courthouse, for instance, one day there was a pipe that burst. So, sometimes the maintenance workers do have to come in on a holiday or a weekend. Because obviously, you can't let water sit, you know, and cause more damage.
How do you handle it when they're exempt employees with salaries? Or do we have any of those?
That was what I was gonna ask, too. Do we have any exempt employees that would fall under that, you know, statute there? That would need consideration beyond what's already listed here?
It would just kinda go towards their admin leave earned. It's not gonna be like a premium differential in their pay, though, no, sir.
Gotcha, so they're just basically getting comp time?
Yeah, eventually, if they meet their hours, yes.
That's right, we did something on comp time.
Yes, yeah.
Forgot about that.
But it would apply for, cause I know, like, Memorial Day, we have the Memorial Day event, and some guys come over there and set the P A system and all up. So, they would fall under that, right?
Hourly pay.
Well, not if they're not emergency person, not if they're not public safety. However, they would get, if they're, if they're non-exempt, they would get their holiday pay and whatever hours that they worked.
The straight pay.
And if it was, and if it was overtime, they'd get overtime at that point.
Yes, yes.
They'll do double time and a half on a holiday.
So, essentially, this came about because these five holidays were important because of callouts, right? And then, obviously, a lot of accidents, injuries, you know, fireworks, let's just say. Fires going out to calls, EMS are running, you know, providing transport and services. And so, the need, they're getting the eight hours. So, the directors were like, well, what, what's the incentive for them to come to work when the other people who aren't scheduled are getting the holiday pay also? So, that's why it was kinda like a compromise. Can we offer premium pay for just the top five holidays? Because they didn't know if you guys would support all the major holidays, so they didn't wanna, you know.
I mean, this is government versus private, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's, just clarify for me, please. So, a non-exempt worker that puts in forty hours, and it happens that the holiday falls on, you know, within that forty hour, or eighty hour, how many, bi-weekly, or whatever falls within their normal pay range, whether it be forty hours or eighty hours. And this falls into an overtime situation. So, they would have their time and a half, I'm assuming. But if it were a holiday, and they were having to work on a holiday, they were getting paid for, would they fall into a double time and a half scenario presently?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, these are.
We can start with this and then change it later, but I mean, this is a good start, for sure.
Yeah.
Very good. Any further questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? With not opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number five, consideration to approve and publish a policy for section 6.20, vehicle use, care, and maintenance to the human resources standards of practice.
Yes, this is actually a six point one oh, I think that was just a little typo in there, cause in the draft, it's six point ten. This is a new one, and this was created, a couple departments all touched this and worked together, so we're kind of happy with this. Basically, this is dealing with anybody that's not falling under the preview of the sheriff, okay? So, this is touching any department under the county manager, border commissioner's side, and the electeds who use fleet vehicles. So, we're here to answer any questions you may have. The form was also presented to you, if you guys have any questions.
Gotcha, so just in summary here, it looks like if they're within thirty-five miles, that's okay.
Well, that's for the take-home, yes, sir. If they fall in that category, yes.
And authorized use. That timeframe, got it?
Yep. Yeah, we just broke them apart into the categories, pool, daily use, or take-home. We explained, you know, how they would reserve them, what was restricted, laid out the definitions. The department heads, their responsibilities, signing out the vehicles, returning them with, you know, gas. Cause a lot of times, pool vehicles are returned to Miss Marie on E, and then we have a hurricane coming, and everybody's trying to get gas, right? So, just trying to be considerate.
Fill it up, half tank.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, pick up your trash, you know, take care of it like it was your own kinda thing.
Just commons.
Yeah, just be courteous, right? Yeah, it's a privilege, it's not a right.
Don't be like the car I get into the driveway every time it's on empty when we're trying to go somewhere.
Yeah, of course, right? Yeah, yeah. And then the big thing is obviously the GPS tracking, and just don't mess with the device. Yeah, so.
Very good. Is anyone opposed to making that, just refilling the tank instead of a half tank? I don't, I mean, is the half tank just a courtesy?
Yeah, yeah.
What is it, what? Say that again?
When you have a return condition, vehicles must be returned at or above half a tank of fuel.
But he's saying make it a full tank.
Well, I guess if they, if they went and drove a quarter, and it was full, and they only drove a quarter of a tank down, there's no reason to go fill up, maybe.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I guess there would have to be a cutoff somewhere. Any discussion on this, guys? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve alternative one.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Item number seven, consideration to approve and publish section 4.03, tuition reimbursement of human resources standards of practice.
Yes, we talked about this a few times at the past two retreats and a workshop, I believe, so everything is in your packet. I don't have it printed in front of me, sorry. But I'm here to answer questions. Yeah, we've tweaked it a few times, so.
It's very, it's very good to me, it looks.
Very straightforward, yeah.
And I like the percentage breakdowns, you know, if you don't do, and that kinda stuff.
Yes, ma'am, yep.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve this presented.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Yes.
We missed one, yeah.
Yes, I did. I moved to seven instead of six. Okay, Sarah? Moving on to item number six, moving back to item number six. Consideration to approve and publish an amendment to section 2.11, attendance of the human resources policy standards of practice.
Okay, so this is kind of unique. It's literally just changing a few words, again, the highlighted section. And this came from some of the first responders, a director, a department head, just kinda closing a loophole. So, section three, scheduled absent, A, personal illness. There is a line where it says, "When absent from illness for three consecutive days, on a normal shift," right, that's eight hours. Well, first responders, twenty-four on, forty-eight off. We had an instance where an employee really took full advantage of that, and was trying to tell their director that they didn't have to give a note unless they were literally out for over an entire week. So, trying to kinda close that, you know, sometimes there's one bad apple, and we have to tighten up these rules. So, just a little amendment to the text, that's, that's all. We're just asking, or twenty-four hours for first responder positions. Just changing a little verbiage to clean it up, so we don't have anybody kind of trying to work that.
They are the reasons why we have the rules.
Yes, sir.
Exactly.
So, people just do the right stuff.
Yeah.
Very good. Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Maybe going to item number eight. Consideration to approve and publish a job description for finance director and accounting manager.
Yes, so, as presented at the workshop in Atlanta, this was from the consultant, and any questions Tim can answer?
Yeah, and I could go over this. This is kind of the first step in the reorganization of the finance department. It, it puts the finance director, gets him more and more out of the realm of day-to-day operations. Put that, puts that in charge of the accounting manager, who will, in fact, report to the finance director, and free the accounting man, the finance director to work on, primarily on budget, audit, special projects, and we've got a lot of budget restructuring and capital improvement budgets that we're, that we need to get going.
Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Sarah. Item number nine, consideration to approve an amendment to the software services agreement between Effingham County Tax Assessor's Office and True Roll Call. True Roll, sorry.
Yes, sir, Danielle Carver, Procurement and Contracts Manager. The True Roll software has been an essential tool in identifying improper homestead exemption claims by cross-referencing databases across multiple jurisdictions. This service has helped ensure tax compliance, detect violations, recover lost revenue, and improve overall tax integrity. So, this amendment introduces key changes, including the addition of the application vetter service. This will enable new homestead exemption applications to be sent to True Roll for verification. And also, the verification process will be automated and integrated with the county's C A M A system, online forms, or scanned paper applications uploaded to the secure portal.
Do we have any reports from this, as far as captures, to show, you know, what is capturing, you know, missed revenues by improper reporting? I'm just curious, if not, I'd be curious to see it at some point.
I don't believe I have anything on the capture portion.
Very good.
They usually keep pretty good records on that, so I can, I can get that.
That's what I was gonna say, it really could show the public their return on investment for, you know, this, this type of software, so.
Right.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So, move alter, um, alter, alternative one, thank you.
Second.
Can't get it out.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number ten, consideration to approve a quote for the project cost for relocating a four-inch high-pressure steel gas main with Claxton Gas at Blue Jay Road in Midland.
Yes, Jonathan Holm, county engineer. This is in regards to the Blue Jay Midland roundabout, and there's the Claxton Gas line that is there within our right-of-way. So, we've agreed to relocate, or pay the cost to relocate that in anticipation of the roundabout that's gonna be going there. Claxton Gas has to use their contractor to do that work. I will say that staff looked at it, and we did, you know, reduce it down thirty thousand dollars, so I'm excited to, you know, kinda trim it up as much as we can. So, staff's recommending alternative number one.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I've looked at that, too, Jonathan. And it looked, I mean, it's definitely a neophyte when it comes to this kinda stuff. But I just thought the tie-ins were high, the twenty-five grand a pop for the, for the, you know, after they, I get the per square foot on the linear footage of it, but then you get the tie-ins, they're twenty-five grand per tie-in? Can that take more than a day to do that, once you've moved the pipe and everything, or?
I think it's trying to maintain the line, the gas that is associated with it.
I'd like to say, I don't know, I just looked at it and go, I went wild.
Versus like a water line where you can, you know, isolate the valves, shut it off. This is to maintain the gas that's, that's going there.
You have to recirculate pressure somewhere or something.
That's right. And it's, it's high risk with it being a gas line.
Think about that part, yeah. Just curious.
Good question.
Any further questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Item number eleven, consideration to approve to ratify and affirm change order number seven with McWright LLC for Admin Building Renovation Construction Project.
Yes, sir, good evening. Trey Wilkins, project manager for the county. The background on this change order is, honestly, you know, things come up during construction. It's a two-part change order. There's a nice sidewalk and courtyard proposed, coming out the backside of the addition. The design did not account for, honestly, the elevation of the sidewalk and the adjacent courtyard. So, the sidewalk is gonna be, almost like obstructing the water drainage from, from leaving. So, we're gonna add a couple inlets in there to remedy that situation. And then, secondly, the, there's no H V A C access on the north side of the building, so they're gonna cut in a door for, for access.
Seems like something like that. Why wasn't that just from the very beginning? That just seems like that's something you do. And I was looking at the wall hung sinks. I mean, you know you gotta hang the sink. You know what? It just seems like that's something that should've just been common sense to put in the plan.
I guess, yeah, to add to Beth's, I mean, I see we're at two hundred twenty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars in overrun so far, change orders anyway, from the original proposed amount. How are we capturing, moving forward, that we don't do this again? And, you know, obviously, this is, this is all necessary. I understand things come up, I haven't been in, you know, in the construction trade myself at some point, so. But there are some things that can be foreseen with due diligence.
Yeah, I, I think the one thing to understand is the, the majority, or eighty percent, eighty-five percent of that two twenty-one, is we made the decision to mill and overlay the entire parking lot.
Gotcha.
And so, you know, we've got a three and a half million dollar, brand-new building, and as proposed, the parking lot honestly would've looked terrible with the way it was, just gonna be patched, where they were cutting in new utilities and new parking spaces. So, the extra cost to, to mill and overlay, I mean, it, it looked awesome.
And I, and I, and one of the things that we are looking on doing on future projects is to have some, to actually budget for a contingency for small items, and have, and limit that approval to, you know, to small line, line items for, I mean, you're, you're gonna miss stuff, right? You're gonna miss an access door, you're gonna miss, you know, some of this minor stuff, but it all shouldn't have to come back to you, for, you know, the parking lot obviously does. You know, but if it's a larger ticket item, then, then it doesn't meet the threshold of the contingency, but the smaller ticket items would. And so, therefore, we, we can resolve it, and we don't leave it up to the contractor, we leave it up to the county manager to approve.
True. I was giving Trey the opportunity to say, now I'm here, and I'm gonna save us from all this. And Trey, you missed your opportunity, buddy, I'm sorry.
I'm the guilty party on the storm drainage thing. I mean, in a perfect world, I mean, it would work, but the mulch backs up, or the grass grows up just a little bit, it's gonna backwater up into our, our brand-new building, in our existing building.
So, we've got more flooding here, I, like, we were talking about the only question I.
On a smaller scale.
And I think we've got, we've got like, that I know of, just two more items. And one of them is a larger ticket, it's about fifteen thousand dollars. It's because the, we could not put the handicap parking spots in the front because the slope of the parking lot exceeded what's allowable under ADA standards. And so, we put them on the side, but the problem is the side door is not a public entrance. So, we have to redo the, the sidewalk between the handicap parking to the front door.
Gotcha, thank you.
That's probably the biggest ticket item, and they also forgot to put a, an access window in one of the, in one of the service windows.
Right.
An access port on one of the service windows. But those are the only two I know that are remaining. And then, we're hoping to get into this building, start moving in on April first, and they'll anticipate turning it over to us fully on the fifteenth, or the fourteenth.
So, did we let Stephanie know she's still remaining in here?
Was she? The fifteenth.
I figured you had the biggest office of the building here. I figured you had the biggest office of the building here. Thank you, Trey, I'll wink at you next time, I want you to take some credit for something, very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion. If no further discussion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number 12, consideration to approve amendment one with Raph Tellis for the rate and financial planning study at water treatment plant in Effingham County.
Yes, sir, this is just a little bit of a catch-up. Raph Tellis was under contract to do a rate study in regards to our capital cost recovery fees. With the work we've been doing on our water project, they pivoted to help us with the rate study for that particular project. And they submitted a change order for about $35,000. So their now their contract amount now is 85,000. So it's just to bring them in line with the the two scopes of work they've been working on for us.
Very good. With ultimately the goal of keeping us in line with our with our spending. Very good. All right, any discussion from the board?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 13, consideration to approve resolution number 025-008 for the collection of taxes in an amount of $1 less.
Good evening.
Hey, Daniel.
Thanks for waiting around.
Tax commissioner, not Danielle.
I almost did, I almost did it to you, but I changed on mine.
These that I have are just streamlining the process of a collection. Sometimes we have examples that the bill 72 cents, 17 cents, 93 cents. Stamp costs 63 or 65 cents to send, so it's just to clean that up, there's no reason to lose money and send these bills out. So I'm asking the board to allow me to waive those, clear those off.
Cost you way more net to collect it.
Way more.
So you're waiving the fees entirely and not pushing them forward to the next one?
Correct, we waive it, clear it clear it up, so it's a it doesn't show up on any kind of.
You have a roundabout number on that as far as how that goes?
No. No, it it depends on, I mean, it's it's a bunch of different factors that would cause that. The few examples that I brought, I mean, it really can be anything. One was Oglethorpe Electric for 17 cents. It was just the way it fell, the timing of it, and when the bill came out, I mean, it's.
Just trying to clean your books up.
Just trying to clean it up, make it streamlined.
And the people that you have to pay to do it.
Envelopes that I have to print and send with my beautiful name on it all over the county.
So I could short pay all my tax bills 99 cents from now on.
All this for 17 cents?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Why did we elect him?
We had one tape two pennies to the bill and send it back, so trying to eliminate that.
Thank you for a common sense approach.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Any discussion from our commissioners, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Good idea, make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries. Item number 14, consideration to approve resolution number 025-009 regarding dispersment of county taxes and bi-weekly dispersment of motor vehicle taxes to the county.
Yeah, this one, I'm trying to set standards, so we have a everybody knows when the money's coming right now, or in the past, it would come when they got it finished. So I'm getting everything done on a schedule and just to make sure everyone knows when to expect their money, and we have it ready for them on time.
Thank you, that's a great idea. Any discussion from the from the board at all on this one? Do you have anything you want to elaborate on that at all, or just?
No, just standard procedure, all four of these are.
Gotcha.
Motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, the motion carries. Item number 15, consideration to approve resolution 025-010 authorizing the tax commissioner to waive certain amounts of taxes owed.
All right, this one can be different things. Say we had a mail delay, someone mailed their check in, it's postmarked in time, it doesn't get to us. So allows me to be able to take that penalty off without having to come before you guys to waive them. There are a bunch of, again, a bunch of different circumstances that can happen to make that also. If if I'm able to collect a $5,000 payment to waive a $25 late fee, that's something that I feel like we should do to get the money in the county's coffers. But again, we'll let you guys decide on that one.
We all know about the postal service.
Is is there any limit to how much you can waive?
Yeah, and it's in the in the resolution, it's, you know, nothing of any kind of gross neglect and make sure it's there's no monetary value on that, it's at my discretion. But again, I'm here to collect the county's money, not waive penalties. So it it depends on, it's a case-by-case basis.
But if it's postmarked, you the they're presumed to have gotten it in in time, right?
I give you.
Basically, or is I don't know, is there law on that or security?
No, and it's it this is standard, all of these are standard throughout the state resolutions. I know I had one check that was mailed in December that arrived this week. And, you know, we had one that a property was actually sold at a tax sale, we had to rescind the sale because the check got lost in the mail, and they had in fact mailed it. So, you know, that's an extreme case, but our postal service is does a great job, but sometimes they, you know, we have these problems, and it just, we're trying to eliminate any kind of problems with that.
So this is exclusive to fees only, in addition to the taxes, not actually waiving the tax?
Yeah, I I won't waive tax amounts, no, these are these are fees that that come up.
Unless it's less than a dollar.
Unless it's less than a dollar.
Who precedes the other ones, who precedes it, so see what you.
You know, I try to get the most money for the county.
Very good. All right, any further discussion, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one. Everybody seems hesitant on that one.
All in favor?
I was looking for an alternative, I didn't see it, I said second.
You guys down here on the end?
I'm good.
Is this just resolutions?
Oh, I'm sorry, you had a motion?
Yeah, we entertain a motion.
I guess I was in La La Land a minute, go ahead, I I'm in.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion carries. Item number 16, consideration to approve resolution 025-011 establishing a due date for property dates.
Yeah, this is kind of same thing, streamline the process, having our county on a standardized billing and collection process. This can float, as you know, if everyone doesn't come together as a county, it can be a problem to get the digest done in time or get the bills out, but we want to standardize that to November 20th, so we all have a goal to shoot for, to get everything together and out to the taxpayers in time. November 20th was the date I chose, it's a little bit before, you know, the holidays, you don't want to give a give a tax bill right when it's time to buy Christmas presents, so we want to give them a little time to do that. So that's just the idea to streamline it, keep it all at one time.
And that'll carry this day forward from year over year, depending when it falls, I'm assuming.
I'm sorry.
Calendar day, it'll just carry year over year from this point.
Correct, this, yeah, we put these in throughout my term, I don't believe we put an expiration date on these.
Understood.
And if it, and maybe it was in there, if it falls on a weekend?
If it falls on a weekend, I'd have to go back and look, but um.
That's why I didn't know.
Next business day.
Yeah, it'll be next business day.
Yeah.
Plus have a long wait for the post office to get there. Which has been a challenge here lately. Very good, any further discussion from the board, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
All in favor? Unopposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 17, consideration to acknowledge an annexation petition as submitted by the city of Guyton for a property owned by Tellens Cadishon, consisting of approximately .64 acres located at 2698 Highway 119 South, Guyton map number 294, parcel number 40.
Yes, sir, I'm just going to display the areas on the screen, this property is contiguous with other properties within the city of Guyton.
Any discussion from the board on this? Being out here, none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
All in favor? Unopposed, the motion carries. Item number 18, consideration to acknowledge a petition for annexation as submitted by the city of Rincon for a property owned by Jaco Acquisitions LLC, consisting of approximately 8.39 total acres, located on Highway 21 South, map number 465M, parcel number 13.
Yes, sir, this property also contiguous, it is separated by the road, but considered contiguous.
That's on the end of Westwood, is that correct?
Yes.
It's kind of behind the Texaco, kind of curves up in, or it used to be Texaco.
Okay, and it comes out behind McCall right there.
Cross from chimney, directly across from chimney.
Gotcha, and it's contiguous due to the annexation, I'll just try, I see it there, okay. Any discussion from the board, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, the motion carries. Item number 19, consideration to acknowledge a petition for annexation as submitted by the city of Springfield for a property owned by Ronald E. Roderfer and Judy Reiser, consisting of an approximate total 32.32 acres located on Highway 119 South, Springfield, map number 344, parcel number 3, 3B01.
Yes, sir, another property that is contiguous with other properties located in the city of Springfield.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, the motion carries. Item number 20, consideration to acknowledge a petition for annexation as submitted by the city of Springfield for a property owned by Kildere Land Company LLC, consisting of approximately 23.64 acres located at McCall Road and Highway 21 Springfield, map number 389, parcel number 7.
Yes, sir, they are finishing it up, as you can see, most of the properties surrounding it is already within the city. So it is contiguous.
Very good.
It's surrounded.
Any discussion from the board, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, the motion carries. Item number 21, consideration to approve to reappoint Barry Flunery to the hospital board as representative for the 5th district.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Kiefer does wish to reappoint Mr. Flunery, this is a four-year term. If reapproved or reappointed, his term will expire February 2029.
Thank you, Stephanie. Mr. Kiefer?
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment.
Second.
All in favor? Unopposed, the motion carries. Moving on to reports from admin.
Yeah, just to give you a heads up on a couple of things that that's going on. One of them is we are just about to start the construction of McCall Park, and it will actually result in it being closed to the public, I believe, effective. Oh, Baker Park, I'm sorry. Calm down.
I thought McCall was done.
I'm sorry, Baker Park, and it's effective Monday. It is, we're looking to looking to close that, and we're getting word out this week just to let folks know. We're also gonna actually put a, we just got a fresh rendering of it, we're gonna put it on kind of a weatherproof sign to put it out front. When people come there to go for a walk and they see that it's closed, it'll soften the blow when they see how cool the park is gonna look like. Second off, we, with the approval of the but of the midterm budget, there's a lot of benefits for Effingham County and counties in general. So hopefully that'll get resolved, that'll get signed this week by the governor. And then we will start with some announcements with regards to what the county has planned with regards to its new water system. But it also includes an additional $1.3 million in L-Meg money for roads with with no match required. So Jonathan is already working on to making sure that that is included in the, because it has to be obligated by by June. And I will be off to at at training for the until the end of the week, but I will be available.
Very good, thank you. Anything from staff, you on Tim? Good, thank you, Tim, how long do we anticipate the park to be closed down? Very good, thank you. Do we have a need for executive session?
I do not.
Very good. Anything from commissioners at all?
It's just a minute, we don't have to say it, we just look at it.
Mr. Kiefer?
Yeah, no, we're we're paving's underway at Hickory Knob, so that's good. Positive comments from some folks that live in there on the process. And another thing, and it may be something I can get with I T on our website, with the Veterans Park Board, I serve on, as a member on that. Seeing if we can streamline there, get your name on the on the wall. It's a very antiquated process, meaning you would have to have them email you a PDF, you print it out, fill it out, scan it back in, and I just wondered if there's a way we can help.
We can, and so we are in the process of doing the pre-work for the complete website redesign. You know, we're gonna be scrapping most of what's on there right now and reorganize. Everything's on new content, some of it's going to be figure out what sort of form-based processes we can create just to streamline the process, but the also the other part is creating a one-stop where you log in one time and you access all of our services, so.
Just, we'll keep that in mind and go forward.
We'll we'll add that one to the list.
Mr. Helm?
Just my usual dump trucks, every time I turn around, somebody's complaining and running on roads they shouldn't run on. I set it the stoplight today at Ebenezer and 21, and in the span of the time I waited for it to turn green, there were three dump trucks that ran through the light going from Ron Station Road to Ebenezer. And it was just, it's just like, and I know you've hopefully got the deputies, and I heard some positives in the Ron for the Ralph Ron Road that they were helping there, but that was just considered, I think, that it's just a truck route, and it's just tearing up, that road's just getting worse and worse, you know.
I got two updates on that, actually. One of them is that I know we discussed on the update of the truck ordinance. It would have been on there tonight, but it's an ordinance update, so we actually had to public notice it, it will be on the next meeting. And for that instance, it it really eliminates the ability for for them to say, well, it's the quickest route, right? No, I mean, you 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 actually have to, even if you're going in a slightly opposite direction, you have to go to go from a truck route to another truck route. And so that that should resolve that issue there, won't resolve all of our trucking concerns, but it will with that particular location. And then the second item is Ron Station, I believe that's on our summer list for for resurfacing, we're just, I think that one, we're doing some core sampling on just to make sure that we get the pavement right on it.
Well, people are just aggravated because they're not supposed to be there, and they are. It's just, you just hear it all the time, y'all probably hearing it too.
Well, even with the ordinance changes.
500,000 dump trucks.
Right, I believe the original ordinance will give it some traction though, as opposed to.
Yeah, I mean, it's still gonna come down to enforcement, that's right. But at least there's something there.
But it it, what it does is it gives the sheriff's office, you know, a little bit more enforcement power because we we gave them a, you know, a lot of these trucks can come in and say, hey, you know, I'm going in the adrenal direction of where my destination is.
There's ambiguity in that for sure.
And, you know, they kind of have to give them the benefit of the doubt sometimes, so this closes that door, it makes it a little bit more concrete. Uh, and, you know, they kinda have to give them the benefit of the doubt sometimes, so, um, this closes that door, uh, and makes it a little bit more concrete.
All that same token, uh, when, uh, Sheriff Dunn the blitz the other day on Hodgeville and Goshen, he did mention that there are a lot of them are complaining about the signs. Well, I didn't, I pulled my truck on, on Goshen, when I get on Goshen, then I see the sign, and then there's nowhere to turn around.
Yes.
So they're looking to get them closer to Twenty-One, basically.
Well, we're gonna try and get the, the, we're gonna try and do best we can, um, to, and we did, we ordered new signs, we're gonna try and move them as close as we can, but stay within the, uh.
The limit as far as.
Yeah, the MUTCD standards, or whatever it's called. Um, um, but, you know, and then also when, um, we're gonna get some riders from the crossroad signs so that, you know, when you see, you, when you're driving up there and you see, you know, Goshen Road, or whatever it is, um, underneath where the intersection will say Goshen Road, it'll say no trucks, so.
Correct.
We're gonna try and do as best we can. I mean, I, I think a lot of these guys know, when they get on the road, it's not their first time on the road.
I was gonna say, I mean, part of their, having a professional commercial license is knowing your routes and where you're supposed to go and not to, doing your due diligence, so. Just like if I didn't have a speed limit sign on the road and I do a hundred, I'm still breaking the law.
Yeah.
Um, I know what I'm doing, so, um, I believe the sign thing is a great, you know, here you are, but let's be honest, they're professionals, they should know where they are either way, so.
You'd be amazed at how many first timers were on Goshen Road.
Trust me, I heard.
I don't know, I don't know.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Mr.?
I know he wants, he wants to get on the road, I'll, I'll call him when he get done, next week or something.
Mr. Floyd?
Good.
Very good, all right. And I, I think I've said enough tonight. Very good. Uh, moving on to, since there's no need for executive session, um, executive session minutes, uh, consideration to approve the February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five executive session minutes. I'll entertain a motion on that.
Good, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
None opposed, motion carries. And I believe. Only thing we announce, a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Good evening, Tim. Drive safe.
Thank you.